Biafran Republic Government in exile Finance Minister is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support. For the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defence Forces and Redecleration-related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever, especially in these critical times. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafrans, let's come together and support our Prime Minister Masse Simonipah, who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year 2024. There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life gives back what you give to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to great worlds. So keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. Ayakata. Life is not easy.
Who does that?
Vam vam vam, you're looking different.
Thank you.
Good, I like that. Okay, you're finally slick. No, you're ready.
I am ready.
Yeah, Hollandese reporting.
Good, good.
Yes.
I don't even know where the team did. I just tell my dad, say, "Somebody could wear the team nose, just go and suck and bring her out." I couldn't hear vam vam vam. I got better wife.
That's right. You know they wear, you know they wear, how they wear.
Ah, nah.
And she's been calling me, calling um, Ross and the husband. You know, somebody just called me and vam 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 too.
Yes.
Let, let her be calling us. Because, but two more days, that egg will, will wash her out.
Two more days, two more days.
Except man, that is uh, we have shot the whole one, the God of Heaven, the God of Biafra.
Yes.
The same person that wiped your tears away.
Yes.
The same okay to create that wiped your tears away.
Yeah.
That same man, you want to attack, you want to turn it around.
I don't know which day you're going to bring that voicemail. You need to bring it too.
I brought, I brought it today.
Oh, you did?
I brought it today.
Okay, I haven't seen that, okay.
I brought it today.
Okay.
I will bring it again on the seventh day.
Okay, yes.
That not every country can wake up 2 AM in the night, go to shop without anybody molesting and without anybody being afraid of being kidnapped. That is the, the vision we have for Biafra people. I want to also let those who are shouting Pan-Africanism. Pan-Africanism died with Biafra and it will rise with Biafra. A lot of people are making noise all over Africa, especially those who have access to media. They say, "Oh, what do you have to say about Pan-Africanism?" I have not actually took my time to address them. But today I will make, you know, touch on Pan-Africanism. And I want you to look around yourself. Look around Africa. How many people do you see in government in any African country that is shouting Pan-Africanism? No, only one and he is called Malama, Julius Malama. Julius Malama is the only one in government shouting Pan-Africanism, but he is making a very terrible decision. His Pan-Africanism can never yield any result because it is a complete misplaced of priority. You do not support evil because you have a platform. Julius Malama will be shouting Pan-Africanism, Pan-Africanism, but inasmuch as Arafat supported Mandela, that is not a reason to support terrorism against Israel. What happened on the 7th of October was a complete terrorist attack and must be deflected. You must be able to deflet terrorist attack and struggle for freedom. Malama, with his Pan-Africanism refused to understand the difference between terrorism and fighting for freedom. Another person who is shouting Pan-Africanism is Professor Lumumba. He is not in the government. So what am I trying to say? The only person that is, that have a voice shouting Pan-Africanism today is Malama and he is in the government of South Africa. So if you know that you actually love Africa and you really want Pan-Africanism to come to reality, there is a need for you to support Biafra because that is where the Pan-Africanism will rise. You need people in the government that knows what African people need. And Biafra have young vibrant men and women who will make that Pan-Africanism to become a reality. So if you don't support Biafra, your dream is dead and dead on arrival. My fellow Biafrans, December 2nd, we are going to make history. This December 2nd is sacrosanct in the history of Biafra as we are going to fulfill our destiny on that very day. The heaven and the earth will stand still to witness the occasion. The sun will bear witness and the enemies will tremble before us as the world behold the emergence of the United States of Biafra on international stage. For decade, Biafra have stood firm, fearless resilience and a waverin' against Nigeria terrorism and oppressors. Today, we on the breaks of the new era. We are ready to claim and reclaim our destiny and officially restore Biafra as an independent nation. This isn't just the culmination of journey. It is fulfillment of a dream that our ancestors and heroes set in emotion long time ago, between 1967 and 1970. Their vision is now our reality and every Biafran alive today is part of this historic legacy. Those of you in the United States that has made us to realize this dream up to this point, you are a hero and a hero in of the Biafra nation. The Biafra Convention 2024, from November 29th to December 2024, these days, Biafra from all over the works of life will gather in Lacte, Finland for a five-day event that will mark the beginning of the new era for generation to come. This is more than just convention and I'm telling you, the enemy are not happy. They have done everything thinking that Nigeria can control and can get anything they want. But today, we're not just assmatting them. We are showing to them that not every country supports evil. It's a unification of a people reclaiming their identity, purpose and future. The energy will be electrifying, historic and the pride uncontrollable as Biafrans come together to declare their restoration of their sovereignty. This monumental and historical event will showcase the symbol of our independence and identity and here's what we have in stocks. For those who have been asking questions, what is this convention all about? If you want to declare independence in a foreign land, we are not declaring independence in a foreign land. The independence of Biafra has already been declared. We are only restoring our lost sovereignty. Just like the Lithuanians, the point is that the people don't read the history. We are not going to be the first country to restore a lost sovereignty state. We will launch the Biafra National Identity Card and Passport during the Finland Convention. Finally, making every Biafran place and belonging official across the globe. We will unveil Biafra Ajema during this convention. The Biafra currency will be unveiled. A testament to our economic independence and strength, the flag of the United States of Biafra will be raised, standing tall as a banner of our unity and resilience, representing Biafra to the world. We also will adopt the Biafra Constitution during this convention, a document that insurines our rights, principles and governance for our new nation during this convention. We will also present a map of the United States of Biafra officially, defining our rightful borders and land. It is not just a map. It's a declaration of our place in the world, my fellow Biafrans in the US. We have dignitaries that will embrace the convention in Finland. Powerful policymakers from different parts of the world will be present in Finland. Powerful speeches will echo throughout the event. We delegate and key international figures voicing our shared struggle for freedom, resilience and determination. And in a formal oral declaration of independence, of the restoration of the independence of Biafra, we will outline each vital aspect of our freedom step by step, solidifying our path to sovereignty state. This convention will also feature national debate on the issue that matters most to our new nation. Uniting Biafrans from all backgrounds, representatives from across the forty United States of Biafra, delegation from the different countries where Biafra has their liaison offices and vote on bills, creating the legal backbone of our nation. The establishment of the declaration document will formally declare our restoration of independence of Biafra, marking our collective vision for the future. And to seal this commitment, Biafra delegate will sign this historic document symbolizing our dedication to a free and independent Biafra. This is just the tip of the iceberg as many other incredible things will unfold as the United States of Biafra begin to formally enter into bilateral relationship with other existing nation of the world. And in this convention, we will have one of the emerging nation president to be part of it. This is not just gathering of people. It will be unified voice of over fifty million Biafrans who have already voted in the South referendum reflecting the clear will of the people to establish the United States of Biafra. On November 28th, the final vote count will be concluded. And if the majority says yes to independence of Biafra, Biafra people will give the Biafra government the mandate on December 2nd to officially declare the restoration of independence of Biafra, fully defend it. The Biafra government will then be empowered by this legal document that will be generated from this convention and granted all legitimacy over a sovereign and independent United States of Biafra. This whole world will be watching and the history await us all. I want you to understand that once this document has been generated and the constitution of Biafra is voted on, which is a continual document, a living document from the 1967 to 1970, the battle for the recognition of Biafra will then begin. At the same time, the legitimization of the Nigeria state within Biafra land will enter gear ten. And as that is happening, we will continue to make sure, like the court have shut down today, we will not have any single Nigeria representative from that institution because what they have done to us will take us decade to recover. They have brought, the judiciary have brought anarchy, insecurity and what have you in Biafra land. And the earlier we eradicate them, the earlier we victim, the better for us. Biafra government have already laid down all the principles and mechanism to begin to set out the judiciary of the Biafra government. It's going to take us time. If you think that this is going to be easy, think again. But let me tell you, we have every template step by step. And you can see, we are winning this war even without firing a shot. The diplomatic approach, political approach and armed struggle approach can never fail us this time around. We will make sure we give sleepless night to those who don't want us to sleep. We will give violence to those who brought violence to us. We'll defend ourselves with the same mechanism they have come to kill our people. Guns and bullet. I want you to be very proud of yourself because it is because of you that Biafra land have seen and enjoy peace. Irrespective of the propaganda, do not listen to them. Every one of us, every true Biafran, the fifty million Biafran people who have voted for the South referendum knows the word and they trust this government. And that is the reason every time we ask them to do something, they do it willingly because they know it is all for their good. The price they pay today, they will enjoy tomorrow. If you have not joined this struggle, I don't know what you are watching for. The time is now because tomorrow may be too late for you. We will continue to defend our land against Nigeria state. We will continue to demand the withdrawal and the militarization of the Biafra land. We will continue to make sure that all checkpoint is dismantled. It does not matter how long it take us, we will continue to engage them one after the other until they are gone from our land. Thank you very much. Airborne to the Biafran Defence Force, airborne to the Biafran Liberation Army. They have not even seen anything. We will give them madness and at the end, everybody will help Biafran and we will give glory to God.
Life is a process. No matter how you go about it. Masie okechukunkere, omalecha oke. The Biafran Republic Government in exile Finance Minister is humbly campaigning for global Biafran financial support. For the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defence Forces and Redecleration-related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever, especially in these critical times. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafrans. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafrans, let's come together and support our Prime Minister Massey Simoni Ba. Who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year twenty twenty four. Obonye, obonye, kengya kaza lo no. Freedom is coming, yeah, yeah. Yo, 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 yo. Masi Okechukunkere. Salute every Biafran specially. Yeah. Okechiyo. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo no, 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 no. Okechukuka ma. Onyama na kiti kiti ba kuro wunu. Okechukuka ma. Welun tidi chupuka sebele. Okechukuka ma. Oh, okechiyo. Okechukuka ma. Masi Okechukunkere neke lunu. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo no, 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 no. Okechukuka ma. Okechukuka ina yo na nyasi. Okechukuka ma. There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life gives back what you give to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to great worlds. So keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. Ayakata. Life is not.
The rising sun will our cherry. Be love and hope and all our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all our wars. But if the prize is that for all we hold dear, then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Still in our blood will come a free will. The weapons stand that which and all its are free shall always be a blood of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible, unscathed will pass. When we are void, the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember those who guide us. Then shall our throne, let fill the glorious song of victory with God, oh mighty God. Oh God, protect us from the ill before. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human is called. To give and not to come the cause each day. Let us rule to serve with resolution. To make this land a land of righteousness.
Thank you. My people. Idima, ezichi neke. Eniwe, na ba ma. Owa, nasi, idima. Eh, idima, ezichi neke. Idima, ezichi neke mo. Eniwe, na ba ma. Biafra, sena, idima wo. Eh, idima, ezichi. Aba kure zuri ke. Idima, ezichi neke. Onyama puli mazu, eniwe, na ba ma. Ma si, owa, nasi, idima wo. Eh, idima, ezichi neke. Father, we thank you. Lord, we bless you because you are a good God. Father, we commit this meeting into your hand right now. You are the silent listener to every conversation. You are the head of this group that we are in. Father, we hand over this meeting unto you. Because we know that anything that is handed over to you is safe. Father, I call you, oh lords, to come and take absolute control of the environment that we are today. Father, you are the same God of Jacob. You are the same God of Abraham. You are the same God of Isaac. You are even the same God of Gideon. You are the same God of David. Father, these men called upon you and you answered them. We are calling upon you this moment, the children of God, Biafra children. And we are saying, oh Lord, that this gathering shall be unto you. Father, we soak this gathering in the blood of Jesus. And we pray, oh Lord, that any hand that will point towards this gathering in bitterness and anger, that hand will wither in the name of Jesus Christ. Any eye that will look unto this gathering, this moment, and look it with danger and malice, the eye will go blind in the name of Jesus Christ. Father, we commit this gathering unto you. We soak every man, every woman, every child in this gathering in your blood. Father, we say, this gathering shall be unto you and not unto man. And I come back to the language of heaven. Chi neke ke beniwe, chi neke ke mo. So onye ne, toni ne. Na na si ro wa, ma eke melema, fa man koge, chegida aninga, ine me meetinga. Ola ola o ni roga, gata ngaa, koma iho jo, mo ukwe iho jo. Otu noke ge di dre Biaframa. Na na si di me gi de, he la la, ah, Jesus Christ, onye wa ni.
He say.
Eh, me gi de. Ah, la me gi de. Eh, du la, la me gi de. Eh, me gi de. Ah, la me gi de. Eh, du la, la me gi de, onye esino ga ha, di ra ni nama. Obu na, ah, Jesus Christ, ka ino, ka ipre ibra. He say, he say.
Nafa chukusikada ama.
Say, say, say.
Thank you, Honorable Sunny. Good evening, Biafrans. Good evening, our honorable A P M. Good evening to all cabinet members, ministers, reps, admins. I thank you all for being here today. I want to send my gratitude to our leader Mazinamdekanu as well as our P M, His Excellency Joko Eppasimon. I thank our brothers and sisters from the homeland who have gathered today here to make this gathering possible. I thank the friends of Biafrans as well that have gathered here, the supporters for our freedom. I know this gathering is not just like every other gathering. Like this?
This meeting is being recorded.
Is it better? Okay. Okay, I know, like I was saying, I know this gathering is not like every other gathering, other people we expect around the world. This our gathering is about our freedom. It's about the future generations. It's about the past heroes. It's about our resolve, our determination. That is what it's all about, our freedom. I just want all of us here to understand that it's not like we are jobless. It's not like we have nothing to do. That's why we are gathering here. No, that's not the truth. It's because we want our freedom. And we're not gonna stop until we achieve our total freedom. I thank everybody that are present here today and those that are being represented here today. I thank you for making our time to be here because it's not easy. All of us know that. I want to use this opportunity also to comfort the families of those that have lost their loved ones in the hands of the Nigerian terrorist government. Our hearts are with you. We're mourning together. These brothers, sisters, children of Biafra will never be forgotten. It is a promise. I want to thank you all, Biafrans, for standing strong today. It's not easy. It's not by our own making, but you know, when the spirit possesses you, you cannot do it any other way. I thank you all for standing strong, standing by our leader and our P M and the government till this date. Please do not be shaken, do not be scared, because we are almost, we're getting where we are going to. I want to just use this opportunity to remind us today that what we are doing, we are doing for ourselves. We are not doing it for anybody. And we are not expecting anybody to come and do it for us. If we don't do it, it's not gonna happen. I want to ask everybody to be strong and maintain where you stand. Because we wanted a government. We have a government. We wanted our own military. We have our own military. We wanted everything we dreamed of. We wanted referendum. We had it. So what do we need now? Is finance to free ourselves. All of us know that we can never do that without the support of our brothers and sisters. This finance is very, very necessary to free ourselves. We have, we, we actually have everything we want in our palm, it's just to conclude it. Do not let anybody to deceive you. You have to wake up now. You have to. I know some of us that are defected, they are not there just because they think it's the right thing to do. No. They are not there because they think it's the right thing to do. They are there because they are getting paid. They have one challenges or the other that they could use that money for. That is why they are there. But to remember, that money would be money that you eat, you can never, 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 never go free from that. That money is blood money. Because one thing I just want these people to understand today is that that money you are getting and the support you are given, you are actually sponsoring the killings of our people by proxy, knowing or knowingly. I know some of them knows it, some because they, they don't care, some doesn't. But I just want you to understand today that any money that you are being paid to be on the other side is actually you're being paid to allow the killings of your people. You are being paid to destroy everything Oyendu and our PM has been worked for with Biafrans all these years. I just want everyone to know that. So you don't say tomorrow, nobody told me that. I didn't know that. You are getting paid to defund us. You are getting paid to destroy what we are doing. You are getting paid to support the killings in our homeland. This is, this is something I just want everybody to understand. And that money you are eating is your blood money. It can never go down well. Never. It can never go down well. All the prayers, all the tears, all the curses, Biafrans are laying. You're gonna get share of it. I can guarantee you that. There is no escape. This time around, there is no escape. The sayings that everybody are committing right now against the Biafran people, everybody is gonna get the share of the repercussion. So please, for those that are standing strong, keep standing strong. Keep standing strong, because the ultimate gift of all these things is our freedom. Don't let anybody tell you otherwise. I just wanna thank everybody for being here. I am gonna try to cut it here. I'm gonna thank everybody. When you're making donation, please remember, you are not donating in my pocket. You are not donating in any of us pocket here. You are donating for your freedom and the freedom of future Biafrans. I thank you so much for everything and I thank you for being there. God bless you all.
Thank you, Madabi. Okay. Good afternoon, good evening, and good morning. Um, Biafrans, our protocol subsahab. I'm going to say that God made this day. I know we had bad news this morning from the homeland. And we are praying for everyone that is involved, well, everyone that, that has concerned, immediate family. We are praying that God will console you all. God will give you the heart to go through this hard time. And this brings us to what we are doing. We are fighting from far for things like this not to happen. But before I will continue, I'm going to call down the heart of our internal leaders, people like Chukwemekodmogujuku, Ephion, Mazin Nandikanu, and our PM, Simon Ekba Joko. Whatever they are, we are calling down their spirit to be in this meeting. I know they're always with us. They know what we are doing. People in homeland, we are pleading that you all will cooperate because what our men on ground is going through because of what men, uh, because of people in homeland. It is not funny anymore. I know you are did not curse it. It is cursed by some individuals. Their blood is flowing in their vein, but they don't have brains. God will visit them and the spirit of the people that died, that we are fighting for. We never leave them unpunished. We say that, um, the thing we are doing here is to call for fund. Fund, fund, fund. Our angels cannot do without, they cannot go out there empty-handed. And they cannot go empty-stomach. And if they are sick, they cannot go out either. That's why we are asking that wherever you are, whoever you are, the only thing that will make this journey to be short is going to be funding. If we have money, we will buy our walking stick, our granite, our missiles, our armored tanks, and Tokano jets. All these things, we need them to make this journey short. But due to that, we don't have them now, we're asking everyone to come on board. Um, our APM, he's the only one here, so his spirit is here, his body is here too. We are saying, good morning, good afternoon, and may God give you strength for us to be moving stronger. All the ministers, um, all the administrators, all the admins, everyone. I'm saying, thank you to everyone of you for all you are doing. Nobody is being paid for what we do. But we are only asking Chukwakikabiama to keep on giving us strength to keep on moving on. And in this, I say, eh, born to Biafrans.
Eh, born. Thank you, Dr. Ruby. Thank you.
Ruby, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Honorable, Honorable Sunny. Before that, right since we have the North and South American rep, uh, minister, many, we, uh, he can just use few minute and talk to Biafrans as well, since he have his video. Thank you.
Yes. My greetings to all Biafrans, greetings to all the honorables in the house, and greetings especially to my assistant, uh, acting prime minister. At this point, I also remember our Oyendu and also my prime minister. Uh, at this point in our struggle, uh, those of us who have been around, uh, nothing else should surprise us. Uh, is, is very simple. The, the logic of those who are not supporting us uh, doesn't really add up. Uh, the truth, they have known the truth. Uh, nobody should say that they do not know why we are in this effort. Uh, if you wait for others to do it for you, then you are just prolonging the issue. It is, it's very, it's common sense that if we come together and join our efforts, then we can move mountains. Uh, but if we continue to, to harm and hem, then this struggle will take a very long time. Uh, but the progress we've made already, only the, the most high, Chukwakikabiama has been the one leading this progress. So we are asking you to reconsider. Uh, we do not want to be that people who history will say, well, they are all over the world, but they don't have a place. Like you hear about the, uh, some, some people in, in the Middle East area today that are struggling. Uh, there are other groups also that are don't, that don't have any place. And, uh, so let us not be among those people. Let us make sure that as much as we have representatives around the world and we actually see how others have done, you know, done in their own places, let us emulate them. Let us be counted. So please come on board. Put down whatever differences you have and come and join us to pursue our freedom. The result, the, the reward will be beyond anything you have ever imagined. So, think about it and join us. And thank you all, Biafrans. Ayeud, Mama.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Ekan. Thank you.
I want to let you know that the evil will only strive when good men keep quiet and silent. In the absence of good men, the evil men will always strive. Nigeria have shown to be evil for decade and in all this evil of Nigeria, the good men have always been terrified, fear, and they remain silent for many years. Today, many good men have risen up and they are all in Biafran government exile. I want to let you know that the evil will only strive when good men keep quiet and silent. In the absence of good men, the evil men will always strive. Nigeria have shown to be evil for decade and in all this evil of Nigeria, the good men have always been terrified, fear, and they remain silent for many years. Today, many good men have risen up and they are all in Biafran government in exile. Only one, one dollar was a problem. One, one dollar became a problem. Can't you afford one, one dollar? I can't, you can't, you never, you never. You can't afford one dollar? Because full of any people are laughing at us. They are counting on that thing you have inside you. That destructive demonic spirit to question and to argue everything. That's what they're counting on, to colonize and mislead us. When they speak, they say, we know you can never be united. We know. Only one dollar only. Is it going to kill you? No one dollar. You're not an IPOB. You don't continue. Later you ask also, when is this Biafran coming? Others came here and they got something. Because some of this, they don't, they were away. They will say, oh, oh, God brought you to bring Biafran. Biafran has now come, so you can go home and, and dance there. Let us, let take no class in America. After all, I'm a manager with IBM or Google. That's what you say to us. And mark it down. You know, this thing is going to happen. You will come from America to tell us that you're coming from, you know how to do it. That we that suffered and died should get away and say it. Are you doubting me? We have our ones. Come and join us to make Biafran a possibility before it becomes the reality of our time.
All right, we share this one back to the studio. I believe we are all coming out now. Okay, yes. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you so much. Okay, at this very point, without wasting much of our time, we will welcome the acting prime minister, Okechukwu Mkele. To the screen to talk to the Biafran people for his speech. Thank you, our honorable APM, the man with swag. There were my APM from here.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Sunny Apurawa and all the media team. Special thanks to our leader. First to foremost, uh, we remember our leader, Kudjuku, Kudumewu. We also remember our leader, Philip Ephion. We remember them because they set of example that we follow. Because they open our eye to let us know the reason why we should be free. The reason why we are not part of Nigeria. Special greeting to our leader Mazin Nandikanu. Wherever he is, we remember him. Wherever he is, we remember him. We are doing the needful here. What we are doing is what we prepare the terrorist country to release him. We also remember our prime minister, his SLC, Mazzi Simon Ewa. He's been called for questioning for the same reason. What reason is that, Biafra? We all need to ponder on this and ask ourselves a serious question. Ask yourself question. Why do they call our prime minister for question? After several attempts to assassinate him by the Nigerian zoo terrorist country, they have sent assassin to Finland, not one, not two, not three. We appreciate all he's doing. We appreciate our prime minister, Simon Ewa, for still standing strong, not giving up the fight. And we appreciate our BDF, all our forces. We appreciate all they are doing. And the enemy of Biafrans, this message is for you. What will it profit you if you bring your own people down? What will it profit the enemy of Biafra? By castigating your own military force, those that are protecting you, those that are protecting your land? Rather, you will regret it. I appreciate all the honorable ministers, admin reps and all fellow Biafrans. Thank you all. Everyone that have stand in the path of the truth. Just a few minutes ago, the video, first video that was played is about our prime minister. Our prime minister made it clear. If the good men keep quiet, what will happen? Evil will strive. I was going through Twitter this morning. I saw a lot. Some of our own will be the one castigating the good man. Will be the one castigating those that are making things happen. Those that are actually fighting day and night to protect our land, to make sure we get our freedom. And these people that are castigating the good man, they don't bring nothing to the table. The question is that, who are you? Are you truly a Biafran? Who are you working for? It breaks my heart and I believe it breaks all the hearts of Biafrans that we have such evil people among us. It's painful. It is what it is. Who will fight? Who will fight? Who will defeat them all? Remain strong. Stand your ground. Our leader Mazin Namdekan used to say, unshakable. What does that mean? Don't let anyone bully you. Mandela also said, any man that move from his position is not man enough or is not want to be trusted. Are you one of those that move the goalpost? Are you one of those that move because for your own selfish interest? Remain in the path of the truth. Be who you are. Always stand for the truth. A lot have been going on. This fight is over fifty years we've been fighting with the terrorist country. Even after the war, nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy, the fight is not yet over. Even when people are still shouting, one Nigeria, thinking that Nigeria have accepted them back. Why the Nigerian state are secretly fighting against the Biafrans? I remember there's a lot of time that the Biafrans have to run for their dear life from the northern part of Nigeria. Every minute, there's always a riot. And that riot is a planned deal to chase the Biafran people away so they can use the opportunity to loot, to steal, to destroy their property. It's going on till the time when our leader Mazin Namdekan see what is coming. He made it clear that only how we can be able to live as a safe people is for us to completely free ourselves from Nigeria, which we have re-declared Biafra in Finland. What next after the re-declaration? Our prime minister, Simon Ewa, made it clear that after our re-declaration, we knew the Nigerian state would come with all their arsenal. We come with everything they can throw upon us to stop our freedom. They tried to make that possible by divide and rule in the Biafra Republic government in Eza, of which we have some breakaway group led by Jezebel Ngozi and those that still believe in her. She castigate said all kind of manner of things against our liberation forces. And fellow Biafrans, if you're one of those that still follow her footsteps or still listen to her, ask yourself question. This is somebody who demonize, castigate, cajole our men on ground, our BDF, defense force. And the same men on ground, the same liberation army we have, they have been doing their duty, their job for over three years. All of a sudden, she turned around in just less than a month and a half that our prime minister is not here to cajole them, to demonize them. Our message to that group and her is that they have failed. We will not let them succeed. Our prime minister made it clear. If we let them succeed, if we keep quiet, they will strive. We will not keep quiet. We are putting the house together after the shock of what happened. We are gradually getting back on track. We believe in short period of time, a lot of people will realize they are following her blindly. We saw what happened just this week alone in Osu, in Yamufu, in Imbiri, I believe. How the Nigerian terrorist country are bombing Nigerians, are bombing Biafrans? How the Nigerian terrorist country are killing our people? How do we respond? We Biafrans need to respond in supporting our defense force. How do we do that? If we all cannot be in the battlefield against the terrorist country? We can do that by financially funding. And for the Nigerian government, you are know you're running out of time. We understand that. And whatever you are throwing upon Biafrans, you have tried, tried too many times, time with that number. You did not succeed. Not in our watch now that you will succeed. Biafrans in the homeland, the Biafra Republic government in Eza is with you. Please, all the victim family, take heart. We are with you. We will never abandon Biafra land. We will never retreat from our land. We will do everything possible, everything possible to make sure we liberate Biafra land from the hand of our enemies. If you have not believe that the Biafran government is the legitimate government and is the only government that is here to protect you, you are still dreaming. A lot of you have tested Nigeria for years, over hundred years. What have Nigerian terrorist state offered you? They didn't offer you good roads. They didn't offer you electricity. The terrorist country did not offer you good hospital. The terrorist country Nigeria did not offer you good education system. The terrorist country did not offer you job. Kill Biafrans, deny Biafrans, deny Biafrans from basic amenities. Thing is that every basic human being, every human being, basic things that every human being need to be able to live daily and carry out their duty. Do you want to tell me or tell every Biafran that till now you have not realized that Nigeria is not for you? And if you're a Biafran and you have realized that Nigeria is not for you, what do you do? Are you going to fold your hand and let the evil strive? And let the evil people destroy your land, keep killing you? Just like what happened yesterday in Imbiri and what happened at Yamufu and Osumu. All these bombing that the Nigerian state are bombing the Biafrans is to cause more pain, agony, is to kill Biafrans and eliminate us, wipe us from the surface of the earth. The terrorist country Nigeria never meant well for us. That's why our leader Mazin Namdekan asked us. If we are contributing to fund our freedom, what are we going to lose by doing that? We have everything to gain. If every Biafran is contributing one a gem or you call it one dollar, do you know how much that is? And we have the luck of Biafrans in social media. All they do is to write, lie, slander their fellow Biafrans that are doing the writing. If you're one of those, please kindly disease from it. And for the breakaway group that are sharing people's fellow Biafrans identity, it's time you stop. You are not helping rather because the land of Biafra will reject you. We have forty states in Biafra land. I believe all the forty states have known the truth by now. If not, it's time you start asking question. If you're one of the admin or fellow Biafrans, ask yourself, is there any time that any of our leader, our prime minister, our leader Mazin Namdekan, is there any time they have come to fight against our liberation army? The question is no. And if you see someone fighting against them, there is a red flag that tells you that individual mean no good for you or mean no good for us. It's time that we send a message to the terrorist country Nigeria. How do we do that? Your support. Stand up. Believe in what Mazin can say. The Fulanis are coming. The Nigerian terrorist country, they are coming. They are coming to take over our land. They are coming, they are coming. When he kept lamenting some Biafran thing, just look at what is going on in Biafran. We army Nigerian terrorist military will just be shooting on innocent civilians. These people are not there to protect you. And they don't want you to have your freedom. For that reason, what are you going to do? For that reason, what do you think you should do? Our prime minister Mazzi Simon Ewa made it clear. When the good ones keep quiet, the evil ones will strive. In this situation, the Nigerian terrorist state are the evil ones. Are we going to keep quiet? The subordinates among us are evil ones. The subtores among us are evil ones, are we going to keep quiet? The breakaway group Ngozi and her group, they are the evil ones, are we going to keep quiet? For the past few days. All over social media. People want us to come, make a press statement, condemn what going on. We have done that, we sent out a press release as well. We are walking behind the scene. And what we are cooking. Very soon. It will come public. It's all about result, I don't believe in talking, talking, talking. I believe in result. And I believe every Biafran want result. If you one of the Biafrans that are looking for result. If you one of those that want to make sure that we totally free ourselves. From this terrorist country, you know what to do. Do the right thing. Stop fighting the good men, stop fighting those that are making this happen. Stop the accountability group. You want to know everything, you want to know how we fight the war. You want to know how things are be carried, you want to know where our army sleep. You want to know where the leaf, you want to know who there, who does that? Can you just for a second and trust our liberation army? Can you just for a second and trust our prime minister? Can you just for a second trust the government that have carry us? Till this day, they have carry us in less than how many years with this all achievement? How far we have gone? If you in Biafraland and you one of the admin. That are following the breakaway group. Just because of what you've been paid for or just because of. Your stomach infrastructure, just because of what you will benefit from it, disease from it. Because the land of Biafra will reject you. Because at the end, what will happen? You will not live to tell the story. Please fellow Biafrans. It's time that we all come together and do the right thing. Today, I received a call from one of our rep, from one of the liaison office. Uh, the law enforcement of that very country, which I'm not going to mention. They visit our liaison office. And they always visit and they ask a lot of question. And they let him know as well. That they are following what we are doing. They are following the progress and they also know about the Jezebel, the breakaway group. They made it clear that they knew we have a new elected acting prime minister. On behalf of the prime minister until he returns. That tells you. The world is following. We have a lot of key players from different countries that are caring in what we are doing. We are in the right track. The question is now, are we going to let the evil strive? Are we going to keep quiet? Let's focus on what we have been doing when our prime minister is here. The government still remain, our website still remain, our media still with us. Everything that is working when our prime minister is here, still with the government. We only have a breakaway group. That have their intention of which they know who they are working for. A breakaway group that will come and capture our military. That will come and capture everything that was working. Just two months ago when our prime minister is still with us. All of a sudden, they want to change everything. Please fellow Biafran, don't be deceived. The media team, they come out every day, both in space. They educate, they enlighten Biafrans. Our leader Mazin Namdekan at the time said he's tired of preaching, he's tired of talking. He knew our people are stubborn, but he said, when you say the truth. Biafrans we follow, they will listen. Our prime minister as well. Due exposition for years, not one, not two, not three. We have a lot of education about what is going to happen. And about the template to our freedom. We have all that in our hand. The question now is that, have you forgotten all the teaching of these two great leaders? What else am I going to come to tell you that you have not heard before? What else do you want the media team to tell you that you have not heard before? Don't deceive yourself, don't pretend like you don't know the truth. You know the truth, we Biafrans know the truth. Those that have turned around to sabotage the movement are the ones that don't want to cooperate. And be part of what we are doing. Homeland must be secure, homeland must be safe. Biafrans in the homeland. Before the, the our prime minister was called for questioning. You knew the account, you knew the process. You knew who the administrators are. You all are well coordinated to do, that have never changed. If you believe in our prime minister. Nothing have changed, stand your ground, don't let the evil strive. Still put your money where you be putting it. At the end, the money is where be managed, where be used. That's why the Nigerian government are so scared of us. They have said the time with that number, that there's countries that are funding what we are doing. Because the money that you have been contributing is well managed. And for those. That are fighting the good men, disease from it. Disease from it, come back and do the writing. Come back so that we can all fight together as brothers and sisters. So that a journey of thousand years would be a journey of one day. So that a journey of ten days would be a journey of one hour. Come back home and the Nigerian terrorist country. Biafraland still remain the land of Biafran. You cannot defeat us, you have tried not one time with that number. We'll make sure that the terrorist country Nigeria paid heavily. We believe. We believe, strongly believe in result. Time for talking, talking is over. The result of what we are doing will be our response. Thank you fellow Biafrans, please kindly support what we are doing. Come back from the breakaway group, they meant no good for us. They are here to destroy. They are here to make sure that we're not going to succeed. But we'll prove them wrong because we will not let. Them strive, thank you. Thank you, uh honorable of information. And all the. All the admins from the homeland, thank you all, greeting from here, Deon.
Thank you, our evil APM, we salute.
Thank you, honorable APM, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate Biafrans once again and for those that are just joining us. We are live and direct from the homeland. We are here to keep the flag flying above sea level. So welcome all the reps and admins and all ministers and all Biafrans. Who weren't here with us from the very beginning, we've gone far on our program and. At this point, we come to. The state admins, representation and what they have. Then I want the Minister of Finance of the Homeland to say something before we go ahead. Before I start calling state by state representatives. Minister of Finance of Homeland, are you there? Please raise your hand so that you grab the mic. Raise your hand please so that I grab the mic. Raise your hand so you grab the mic. Raise your hand so you. Minister of Homeland Finance Department, are you there? Alright, yes, you can start, start your mic now, unmute yourself. Over to you.
Hello, my honorables in the house, greetings all.
Hey, wow.
All protocol duly observed. We welcome all of you today in homeland. We are trying our best to see that we crush the head of that woman, serpent, serpent woman called Ngozi. We are studying Gideba. So we welcome all of you today. And we are ready to support our men with our whole hearts. And also prayers, we thank all of you, you are all welcome, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adazian, thank you.
Thank you, Adazian, for standing strong, for not allowing the financial structure. That the prime minister set in place to be scrambled by Ngozi. Thank you so much, you are one of the men and women of steel and of valor. And the prime minister will be super proud of you, the BDF are so proud of you. For not allowing them to be converted to Islamic Sharia Fulani account. Thank you so much, uh Godson, Godson unmute yourself. Godson unmute yourself, Godson.
Uh greetings, fellow Biafrans, I greet you, my honourable Sonia Barawa. And I greet our APM, I greet all the ministers in the house. I'm proud of you guys and I'm proud of all Biafrans that are standing on the side of the truth. And I'm always happy to know that I'm on this side of the truth. On behalf of the people of the Mabu State. I support today's fundraising with some of fifty thousand AJ. Uh, thank you and may God bless everybody, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you. Betty unmute yourself, your hand is up. Yes, we need um all the state admins and representatives come up and pick the mic. And answer the name up, come up, come up. Come up, come up, come up. Maybe former AKMZ Romanos, over to you. KMS Romanos, over to you, unmute yourself. You have the mic?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, I greet our APM. And thank you Sonia Barawa, the Minister of Information. All ministers in the house, thank you all. I'm speaking direct from Alasor State. Uh, also the administrator of Alasor State. On behalf of Alasor State. We are giving hundred thousand AJ. So I just give me some minutes to go into some of individuals. Uh, that.
Only the first, only the first.
I'm coming.
Only the first name, right? We don't need four names.
I know, I know. Okay.
While AKMZ is getting ready, other states should.
I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm already, I'm already there.
Other should get ready, other should get ready, raise your hand up and be waiting. Others should get ready, raise.
Yeah, Mazie Lieutenant, five thousand AJ. Our SSG, four thousand AJ. The Facto Finance Minister, five thousand AJ. Namdi, five thousand AJ. Mazie Attar. Ten thousand AJ, Mazie Samsin. Ten thousand AJ. Obieze County. Ten thousand AJ. Mazie Fidelis. Ten thousand AJ. I and my family. Ten thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alasor State, God bless you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, we come for Anurika, Anurika unmute yourself. Anurika unmute yourself. And I'll be displaying, I'll be displaying some people on. Other tires on the screen, so if you find yourself on brain, hey, don't run away.
Are you hearing me? Yeah, we can hear you.
Alright. Alright, good evening. The protocol in the house. Our honorable APM, I see your work. You are doing a great work. Our Information Minister. And his deputy people are doing a great work. And all the ministers in the house, in the bridge, I welcome you people. I say may you poke a cape, Abia might be with you people, keep you people strong. Everything is open now, so there's no need of telling somebody to come back or go there or no go there. So it depends, our. So it depends, our people who are ready for this war. Because now we are in a battlefield between internal enemy and the external enemy. But one thing, I'm telling our people that the God of Abraham, the God of thunder, the God of universe, the God that made us be alive today, will never, never make us shame. He will never, never put us on shame because he knows our hearts. He knows our hearts, so I bring greetings to you people. Then today's donation on behalf of Odamegu State, new Odamegu State link. Um, in fact, I'm happy today because it was not just how many hours that I I made a voice note that we are preparing for this event that people will come up. So maybe some people, maybe they are not online, but the few ones that captured what I said donated money. And I told them that I will bring their name up. So Madangaleka, five thousand AJ. Marzi Kelvin, fifty thousand AJ. Marzi Moses, twenty thousand AJ. Then Marzi Chibuke, ten thousand AJ. So with this guy called Godson. Godson, if you are in that new link of Odamegu State, please contact me so that I will let you know where to pay the money, so that the money will reach the appropriate place. So altogether, the money from new Odamegu State is plus fifty thousand, Godson, thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madangaleka, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to put a fifty thousand for, uh, for you to complete it. This is from Adazian, fifty thousand to Odamegu. Thank you, Madang.
Alright.
Thank you. Thank you.
Frank in the junior twenty thousand, Odamegu, bueno.
Odamegu.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Anurika.
Thank you.
Thank you. We come to, uh, Lobi. Lobi, unmute yourself. Lobi is not ready, Iketsukwu, okay, please, if you need your camera, turn your cameras on now. Those that need their cameras on, you can turn now.
Yeah, hello, good evening, everybody.
There were Marzi.
Yeah, uh, from Odamegu State. Uh, I'm supporting with some of twenty AJ. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you are on a traditional way, you will appear on the screen, so if
Sunny, 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 these people that are, the people that are hanging up there, some of them might not be our people with some funny names, great, Lobi. So when they open their camera, if what they have is not good, we might have a problem. So I think we should
I'm controlling, I'm controlling this studio. I'm controlling this studio, don't worry. Alright, we continue. Um, Marzi Iketsukwu has spoken, um, Uku, Uku Iketsukwu, uh, Samson. Uku Iketsukwu, Samson. Uku Iketsukwu, Samson, unmute yourself. Iketsukwu, Samson, unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello, good evening, yeah, 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 I'm online, good evening.
There were, there be.
And there were, there were, I'm Dalo. Uh, please, I humbly greet all of you, the ministers, in fact, all of you wonderfully performing. We see you all. Where um, thirty, ten thousand, ten thousand AJ, we have no problem, uh, uh, in the homeland. The problem we are seeing is from, uh, from the foreign land. We here in the homeland, we don't have problem, and we know whom we are following. We are following Oge, Nkere and Co., Abarawa, Vama, Vama and Co., all of you, Betty, we are proud of you and we are happy with what we are doing. Keep it up, there is no problem, God is on our side, nothing, no, no, nothing mega, nothing mega. Uh, very soon our Prime Minister will be out and we all enjoy him and enjoy all of you. Thank you very much, keep the fire burning. Ebon.
Ebon, Ebon, thank you, thank you.
Ebon.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Uh, please, let us correct one impression there. So that those that are looking for topic can train very well. Nobody, nobody is following Sunny, nobody is following Betty, nobody is following Ajary. Nobody is following my APM, nobody is following Adazian, nobody is following Sakelo or Honorable Nana, and then we are following the template and the government and the structure that the Prime Minister set in place. That Biafran forces that the Prime Minister unveiled on the mandate of the Biafran people, according to the Biafran charter. Everything we are doing is what the Prime Minister put in place and we are following that template and the government of PM. So, don't come and say you are following me or following my APM, no. You are following the government that Prime Minister placed. There is a breakaway group, and so you don't allow yourself to be deceived. The APM is here, make sure everything continues to stand. There's my APM, take over from here.
This guy, this person that calls him Lobe, we should handle this Lobe that is laughing.
Allow him, allow him, APM is saying something, please.
Uh, uh, great, you can allow great. Great, great. You see, uh, the name great, yeah, allow him.
Yeah, great, unmute yourself.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. My honorable ministers, uh, everyone from the homelands. Uh, we are so happy to to be in the midst of you people and to welcome you people in the homeland. I hope I'm coming clear.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Uh, yes, uh, we, we're supposed to have more than the number that we are seeing here. But you know, some peoples, uh, they come out to find network. You know, the situation where we are, some of them have went back to their base. And that is why you see the number you see here. Uh, some of them waited and they started making calls, they went back. I, I greet everyone in this fundraising. And we have seen that, um, the way, the, where we are, and nobody called out for this movement, and nobody is paying us. We are here for the future of our children. Why some people think that, uh, PM is paying some of us, PM is paying you. And they begin to surprise why some of you or some of us are leaving. They know that love covered the motive of sin. And that is why we have a privilege to overcome this challenge. And we have overcome them by the truth. As long as God is concerned, we remain focused. And those that are following them, they are following them because he promised them a federal appointment. And that is why you see some of them, uh, he give them secretary. Even some of them, immediately PM was invited. They begin to shout that people attack them, that they are hiding. They are looking for the way to give them money. But they don't know that God is concerned, with God, all things are possible. And today, we have a privilege of being here to express our feelings, to show concern that Biafrans know the truth. Nobody paid any of us to support anyone's, but because of the truth that we see and the tablet that our PM have led, and we are focusing on it. You, you will continue blackmailing, but your blackmail will not last. And there's no way that darkness will overcome light. And you have seen the lights have overcome the darkness. On behalf of the states of the Bonyas, I'm going to call counties how they appeared it. And we have seen how the demo have tried many areas to come in to states, to stop, because what he's trying is to stop people. But God did not allow her to do so. We start with, um, there are fifteen counties that is here, they answer their name. I started with county one, Ekomaka County, ten thousand AJ. Etchira County, ten thousand AJ. Alike County, ten thousand AJ. Imago County, ten thousand AJ. Amago County, ten thousand AJ. Nodo County, two hundred, twenty thousand AJ. Iwago County, ten thousand AJ. Ebony County, ten thousand AJ. America, Amanjuma County, fifteen, twenty thousand AJ. Izik County, fifteen thousand AJ. Amesekoha County, twenty-five thousand AJ. Amesekoha County, twenty-five thousand AJ. Ekumeyi County, ten thousand AJ. Uboji County, ten thousand AJ. Amesekoha Orizo County, ten thousand AJ. Amenjuma Idembia, ten thousand AJ. The total of two hundred thousand AJ. And this is what, uh, Eboni, the statue itself, you know, that, um, this thing comes to us in majesty. Uh, but we believe the next time that we are going to to do, uh, to fundraising again, I believe that we are going to do better. I just want to encourage everyone to remain focused and don't mind what this woman do, woman is doing. You know, this is a movement, this is a struggle, sometimes this thing will come like this, but we build our faith. Unless you have demon inside you, that is where you will know that you are not going to succeed, but as long as God is concerned and your hand is clean, you will succeed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mwacheneke, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aboyans, thank you, we are moving, uh, Eve. If I am motion, unmute yourself. Over to you.
Good evening to you, Ogosonia.
There were one watching.
Minister of Information, it's one morning, I greet you.
There were.
I greet you, my APM. I greet my, our Prime Minister. I greet Martin Namdekan, our leader. And every honorable in the house, I greet you. Uh, honorable Obi, I greet you for a good job. Thank you. Uh, I think I need to say something concerning our state here in Enugu State. Uh, Enugu State is a place where we have been doing things the way it is supposed to. I am calling, I'm saying this to the people of Enugu State. Those outside the, those who are dancing on behalf of the evil woman called Olavaze. I need to say this the way it is in Enugu State. Because, uh, I don't know when this will happen. And I, and I, we are coming. Why I'm putting this this way is because Olavaze decided to destroy Enugu from the beginning. The people of Enugu State are listening to me, if you are hearing this voice, I want you people to understand it. And what I have been doing in Enugu State is to make sure that we flow up the way things are supposed to flow in Enugu State. But Olavaze have become someone who have been collapsing the bridge. They are building over there. Planting many, many trees under the tree, under the river, stopping the river not to flow in our state. Without us knowing. What is going on in, happening in Enugu State? I don't know, but I would say I am the first admin that Olavaze are moving the platform as admin. Because I refuse to abide on her Biafo agenda. Enugu State citizens. I am saying this because many people have been expecting me to say something on the platform, I am no more in that platform. I'm in new platform where things are going well for the coming of Biafrans and for the total of freedom of Biafo. Olavaze asks us to pay money into this Islamic banking, which I said no, that the Enugu State cannot try such. Of which I know he fought me last year, June. When I'm trying to make things happen in Enugu State. And she stood up to pick against the right people in Enugu State, though I know this is have been, this have been the part of her. So Enugu State people, I want you people to start coming out and follow up the way things are going. Like I said, the structure of PM have not changed. This is something that, this is what I have to pass to you people. He said that all the admins should be paying money into the bank of, uh, the new bank, I don't know the bank, of which I told her that I cannot do that. That is the only crime I committed against the woman. And she decided to change, use that evil person called Organazu, I don't know his name, but I call him Organazu because someone that pretend to be an Igbo man, but never been an Igbo man. That is the person Olavaze is using to disabriage Enugu State. I want you people to know this. That boy is never an admin of Enugu State and is never working for the good of Enugu State. I want everybody to come out the way we are doing things and join hand together with the new place group where we are on Telegram and be doing things. Enugu State will stand strong till the PM is out. We are going to maintain the structure till the PM is out. That is the reason why I'm here to open up to you people for those who are still confused of Enugu, where are you going to belong? Don't confuse yourself anymore. Come back and belongs to where we are. However, we are doing the right thing, I have what you go, I have what you go. We are the one that started this from the, from the map. So whatever Ogane, Oganele and Olavaze is doing is wasting of time in our state. Encouraging every citizens to come up, work up, support Enugu State, support this Biafran government in Azar, support our men on ground, give them whatever you want to give to them, so they can be able to defeat our enemy. Our enemy is all over around us, so we need to conquer them. Enugu State in our blood, come up, support Enugu State, support Biafran government. Make sure you create awareness in what we are doing. Make sure you create awareness in what we are doing. Don't move yourself because what we are doing need the attention. Thank you very much. On behalf of Enugu State, we are going to use hundred thousand AJ to support this journey of freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Enugu State.
Honorable Sani.
Yes, my honorable.
Honorable Sani.
Yes.
I wanna support uh uh our Enugu State with fifty AJ as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madabi. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. All right, we come to engineer, engineer Nadi, over to you. Nadi. Engineer Nani, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You need your camera?
Um I won't.
Do you need your camera, sir?
Am I loud enough?
We can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening all. It's a great day today. Um I won't take much long for speaking long. I just want to make a little donation to, on behalf of Allu State because I've got some things to sort out now a bit. I will support in um Allu State with twenty AJ.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Twenty thousand, right?
Twenty AJ.
No, AJ, AJ, okay, I'm sorry about that, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we come to uh Nero Nero Nobi. Nero Nobi, unmute yourself. Nero Nobi, unmute yourself. Nero Nobi, unmute yourself. You have the mic?
All right, thank you so much, um Information Minister, Mazisani Parawa. Um I want to appreciate everyone here. Um before I make a donation, I want to, I want to let us know that um the spirit of Supreme Leader Mazinam Dikana is here. And then I would use two AJ to welcome him. I would also use two AJ to welcome our Obatobi because I know he's also here with us in spirit. I will be using two AJ to welcome Obatobi and to our cabinets that are here. I would also use two AJ to welcome all of you. Um it is an honor and a great um deal that uh we all are here together to um fight for a just cause, you know. Um when you are on the side of the truth, you see you will have peace of mind, your mind will be at peace, your spirit will be at a right that you're doing the right thing. You don't need anybody to tell you that you're doing the right thing. Okay, so um on behalf of Ikemba State, um we will be donating the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand AJ um to support this um wonderful um um liberation. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Are you the admin of Ikemba?
Thank you so much.
No, I, I, I am not. I am not.
So who are you then in the Executive Council of Ikemba?
Um for the, I um for the, I, I just joined um the new um Ikemba State platform and um I have not been briefed. Um I don't know if we've had any meeting.
So how did you, how did you raise the phone if you have not been briefed? How did you raise the phone? Is it only your own personal donation?
Okay, um myself and Wada Nika. I wouldn't want to mention her full name, myself and Wada Nika. I'm sure she's actually here as well.
How come you don't know the uh state admin of your state? And then um you are not a state admin, a part of the Executive Council. And then um you say you just joined the group and then um you didn't mobilize anybody, you didn't then, you just came to represent the and you said this is what Ikemba is donating. You talk as if you are the state admin. You should have said you come to make donation on your own to support Ikemba State, not for Ikemba as the state admin or representative of Ikemba. So do you know where to deposit this your money now?
Um if you, um Mazisani, I don't know, yes, you are actually in our new group where Ikemba State created. I have, I, I have asked a question.
I want to, I want to be sure that you are not one of the person that want to make
Okay.
mention of the amount of money for you to carry name. Hmm? I want to be sure that the money that you're making donation is actually going to be paid. That's why I ask now. Where are you going to make donations to? You know the ways and manners to make this donation? Because uh Ngosi donation goes to Islamic bank account of Taj Bank. Hmm hmm. And we forbid every Biafran to use it so that their security will not be threatened.
Okay, no, 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 not, not, um it is not gonna go to the Taj Bank. I, I actually contacted a good guy, um good guy in the, in the platform, yes. So he said he's going to send me the um account number that the money
Okay, no problem. Thank you, thank you for the mention. Thank you. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you guys. Thank you.
And, and for the um, for the, for the um six AJ that I pledged for, yes, that has actually been paid into um the um uh cryptocurrency wallet address already. Um so maybe I would send the screenshots um to Mazie Good Guy so that then um it can be forwarded to the appropriate
Thank you so much. Don't be angry, be angry of my scrutiny. We just need to be sure of uh what we are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My Jesus, over to you, My Jesus. My Jesus, unmute yourself. My Jesus, if you're using your phone.
I greet everybody. My Jesus is from Aludo, as many of us know. And then I have seen my member here. Uh I've seen Mazu Gaji, I've seen Mekeokai. I've seen a lot of folks are here. Uh actually, we now come or sit to organize ourselves as to make because we were all in Aludo and these are great guys that are making Aludo strong. Uh most of them that are here. And uh when this issue came up, uh saying let us move our states forward, but somebody decided to say we want to belong to this place and if you don't belong to that place, you are kicked out. And all of us who are kicked out. And uh by his grace, I was the volunteer mobilization and orientation uh director and as as uh the Aludo employment and the labor, labor and productivity commissioner. But then we are here. I don't know because it started, I have been here, but I don't know a little time, I, I, I had a nap. I didn't know what if uh my other uh my other competitor has said anything on behalf of Aludo. But I'm saying that personally because I know that possibly others will be waiting to say something. But I'm going to uh on a person, a personal donation of uh five thousand AJ. And I'll be forwarding it to Mazie Mekeokai with the five AJ that I made it, I promised yesterday. So it is going to be ten thousand that I'm going to forward to Mekeokai. He knows how to send it to us. God bless you, my state. I would want everybody, our main, Endaspara, to help us because uh uh a lot of this are having this dual, some people are here and the other people are the other place. Just tell, because they listen to you, Endaspara. Tell your people to join the Antidate Platform, the Antidate Platform so that we can move ahead as we have been doing. I just wanted to help all of us. I greet all of you that have made it possible for we to get to this point. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So next time when you are calling the first name, don't, the last, first name, don't call the last name. Okay, not only you, everyone. Thank you so much.
My sister, uh my people say that a woman that gave birth in the market, it is difficult to tell that woman to close her leg. So I think some of us don't give birth in the market. So but God bless you, look for how to protect herself. God bless us, man.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, um I appreciate all the state and everyone that are answering their names. Please, as you hear your state admins answering the name of your state or counties, don't even wait for them to finish or all the states to finish or your own state to actually come about. Hmm? Just raise your hand, come also and answer, support your state, answer the name of your state as well. Alobe, Alobe, unmute yourself. Alobe, unmute yourself. While we wait for Alobe, okay, Alobe, you have it. Alobe, go ahead.
Oh, all right, thank you, Mazie. Mazie, Vam Vam Vam, you deserve so.
No verse, no verse. I don't confirm you, no verse, because this kind of name, this strange, no verse.
My name is Alobi, my, that's my Twitter name, Alobi, but in the zoo I have
Okay, because when I saw, when I saw the laughing emoji, the thing just triggered me, but yeah.
Thank you. Um let me appreciate uh my acting Prime Minister. We are happy you accept to step in at a time like this. And for now, I don't think we are begging all these uh fallen angels to come back because they are coming back to do more damages. So now they have taken their mat and walk away. That's okay. Those who are meant for this struggle, we, we will fight to the last man standing. That is, we are already out, we are not going back. So I want to support the Lagos Rising Office uh with ten, ten thousand AJ. And I know Lagos will be soon join us here, but you know, in Lagos, many of us travel back to the villages and we on the way coming. So I'm supporting Lagos Rising Office with ten thousand AJ. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alobe, you have to, Alobe, you have to organize for another massive Lagos town hollow. That should happen quickly, eh?
We will, we will do that very soon.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And that will be discussed under the African Rep Meeting, so they know how to do the arrangement. Thank you so much. Uh all right, we come to our honorable US and North and South America, over to you, sir. Unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, honorable. And greetings once again to all the honorables. Um I'd like to um uh lend my support to the Aludo State. Uh and um I will be supporting with two hundred AJ. And um uh I will make, now who do I make this check out to?
Ah, okay. In today's very fundraising, you can use the official website of the government, the two websites that you make your donation. Just do it.
Yeah.
There is data to the minister.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, honorable.
Our praise. Also, one of my admins, uh the Maryland admin uh asked me to announce her contribution uh to Okigwe State. And she is donating fifty AJ.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Our praises, our praises.
Thank you. Okay, APM, you have something to say?
Yeah, uh thank you, uh honorable Emenike. Let me just address, talk to Biafran, just this is gonna be a very quick one. There's one audio flying out there, I think it's from uh one of the enemy camp, one of the ones from, one of, we have a lot of uh uh enemies and from different camp.
APM.
Yes.
Please, this best you just send us the audio. We play it face before you, so that they will hear.
No, 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 I don't have, I just wanna uh advise Biafrans to ignore
Okay.
that, okay, so we are just debunking it, it's not true, it's not real. Biafrans, you ignore it. We don't want anything that will distract us from what we are doing. All this destruction, please, sorry, ignore it. Our Prime Minister will soon be out. Uh he didn't do anything wrong. If we are talking about accountability, those that are the wrong doers or the evil doers are the Nigerian state. We saw what they did in uh in the, in Mimi. We saw what they do at uh Hiamufu. We saw what they did at uh Osunwu. So the Nigerian state is the terrorist country, is this, they are the terrorists. They are all, all this stuff that they are doing is just to name a dog a bad name to kill that dog. So they are the one doing all this evil. So please, Biafrans, ignore this audio from one of the Nigerian agents called uh Ebbe, Ebbe Huedike or whatever his name is. Please kindly ignore it. And if you recall back, the southeast governor, they have at the time acknowledged that they are the cause of the insecurity. And with their all, I know, why they are fighting for power, you know, they do all this atrocity by themselves with the same Nigerian terrorist government that they are working for. Please, Biafrans, ignore the audio message. And on that audio message, you will see Caterpillar was mentioned there. Akinga Urwagu was mentioned there. You will see that these are people that are working within Nigerian state. That alone will tell you that they have nothing to do with what we are doing, they're not part of what we are doing. And they will do whatever they will do to distract us from the reality. And uh please just ignore the audio. Thank you.
Do you, please, APN.
Thank you.
That audio, uh forward it to us so that uh we will give them
I forwarded it to Vam 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 in uh WhatsApp.
All right.
Vam Vam Vam, look at your WhatsApp so you can
Yeah, yeah, we have seen it. As only I'm surprised you have not seen it. No, I see that I'm going wide, wide. Okay, you see it now.
Yeah, you don't have to. They just ignore the audio. So we should just ignore. It's not real, it's not fact. We don't want to validate them.
Okay.
They don't know anything that's going on with the PM and they are talking about what's going on in the court and all what have. Even the justice in the court, they are telling you idiots that are in the zoo telling you what's
Mark people everywhere.
Ignore it, everyone. Ignore it. And we come to, honorable Oke, you can start your camera if you want. And anyone that wants to start camera, you can start your camera now, please. Uh we have uh our honorable minister Kelo, over to you.
Honorable Minister, Parawa, thank you so much. Thank you all the media team. Thank you um honorees that are here. And then I would thank you, our um our leader Mazze Nandekanu and then uh our peer who all these troubles because of us behalf of. Especially we thank our angels who are in, in the forest defending our land. I think we'll just ignore all the devils because they see that we are almost there. We are at the end of the tunnel, so the devil is now risen up all kinds of hell. So I pray we just ignore them and continue the good work they are doing and the most high, which surely bless them. Okay, so um I, I want to plead with our people. Mazze Nandekanu have pleaded, say if every behalf from will just donate one dollar. Let me know. Well, what we have done is we have designed a program. But before I do that, let, let me tell you what, how, how important this is in the sight of the most high. If you don't believe that this, this task we are doing of the most high, I don't know how else I can persuade you.
Honorable Minister Kelo, Honorable Minister Kelo, before you go on, so that you will use your time to address um IOU. Let me put something on the screen first before you continue because I want you to use your time that you have now to address IOU as well. So give me just uh some seconds because you are the one in charge of the IOU department, so you want everything to be
Yes.
going in synchrony. So wait, 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 you put something on the screen. Let me put something on the screen. So that uh you go ahead with this. Okay. Can you see what is on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so um Prime Minister Bield and uh Prime Minister unveiled IOU in a, a thirtieth of uh, is it August twenty twenty four? And then on the tenth of January twenty twenty five, um Ngozi decided to destroy it and call it scam. The IOU that PM unveiled, she now calls it scam. So please, as you pick the mic now, as the person in charge of, director in charge of that department of IOU, I want you to uh dwell there as you uh carry the mic, please. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So um like I was saying, um our leader Mazze Nandekanu said, if everybody will donate one, one dollar, right? We have all the money we need to complete this struggle, but we know that that is not possible. So um Bridgie thought about this and said, okay, what shall we do? How can we encourage people to come in and support this struggle? Okay, so we designed this program. I'll, I'll give you a little bit more detail on that, but let me show, show you how important this is to our heavenly father, the most high. I'm sure all of us here believe that the most high is, they are watching us. Let me, let me just, you know, show you from the scriptures what it, how important this is. All right, this is, I'm reading from Tobit chapter four, verse seven. It says, give arms of thy substance, verse eight. If thou hast, if thou hast so abundance, give arms according, accordingly. If thou hast but little, be not afraid to give according to that little. For thou layest up a good treasure for thyself against the day of necessity. Because that arms do deliver from death and suffereth not to come into darkness. For, for arms is a good gift unto all that give it in the sight of the most high. This is what the most high said. Now Christ has it this into, into what, what he says in Matthew chapter five. Uh in Matthew chapter twenty five, verse thirty one. He says, when the son of man shall come in his glory and all his holy angels with him, then shall he sit upon the throne of glory. And before him shall be gathered all nations and all, and he shall separate them one from another as he shall divide the sheep from goats. He shall put the sheep on the right hand, but the goats the left. Then the king, which is our Christ, uh then, then he shall, then shall the king for Christ say unto them on his right hand, come, ye blessed inherit the kingdom prepared for, from the foundation of the world. For I was an angard, and then he went, he went to list of all the services that you know, these righteous people help alleviate. And then, then after I finished listing that, then the righteous, we say, verse thirty seven, then shall the righteous answer him and say, Lord, when saw we, uh when saw we thee, an angard of, uh and fairly and so on and so forth. When do we see you in need and help you? Verse forty said, and the king shall answer and say unto them, very be say, inasmuch as ye have borne it unto one of the lists of the my brethren, ye have borne it on, unto me.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So my minister, come back, come back, oh my minister, don't go, don't go deep, don't go deep, don't go deep.
I'm going deep, okay? So my, my brethren, you can see now that giving arms is very, very precious in, in the eyes of our, our heavenly father. All right, so consider that you are not doing it just for yourself. As, as you see the people that are being killed daily, it should touch in your spirit that, you know, what can I do to urgently stop this killing? What can I do? And this is all we can do. Support our military. We have this IOU program that the Afra government has promised that they will give it back to you hundred percent and then add another hundred percent to it. Okay, and then we have other programs that you can benefit from. If you just, you know, lend some money to the, to the, to the government, we are in debt now. Okay, and every penny, uh our APN, you know, told you all the money are being, you know, properly used. In fact, the, the, the zoo is looking at it and wondering that, you know, where are they getting all the money that they do, using to do all the things that they are doing? They thinks that there are some countries or some billionaires that are supporting us. It's because uh, uh those who give the money to, they have been very, very, uh you know, grateful us, using the money that you gave them. So please, don't mind those that are trying to destroy this program. This is one of the flagship programs that we have. They've come out with a video before that, you know, calling it a, you know, trash. Now they come out with it again and say this is, this is scam. This is a scam. How can this be a scam? So my brethren, consider to support this. And to that, I am, I have already made a payment of one thousand uh Ajema for this program, to go into this program and I've sent the receipt.
Wow.
Wow, wow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
So much. God bless you, my brother.
Director.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Please, all friends watching this program, from wherever you are watching, the photo you see on the screen, carry your phone, screenshot it, hmm? And then start sharing it in your groups, start posting it out. Wherever you, you have access to TikTok, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, post it out. This very photo you see, so post it out to all group, share it to everybody, share it, share it, share it. This is the IOU loan that was unveiled by the prime minister on the thirtieth of seven twenty twenty four. And you can read what is written there. Can read exactly what PM said there. He said, approach our declaration, which is coming on December second twenty twenty four. The Biafra government is expanding its funding, enable the government sustain its defense. Everything is about the defense, defense, because that is the bedrock of a nation. For these reasons, we are introducing the lane BRGIE, a special loan in addition to our weekly fundraising. Listen up, weekly fundraising. While the mad woman has told some of you that our fundraising now will be times for the exile government, two times for the homeland government. During the December period, she postponed fundraising. Someone that is fighting for freedom went on holiday while the liberation army did not go for holiday. After came back from convention, she postponed fundraising again, making it two weeks without fundraising. Plus the one of December she postponed again, that is three weeks without fundraising. And you are fighting war. The army are in the bushes everywhere. The terrorists are coming every day. You see they are slaughtering people day and night now. And you are not ask yourself questions. So Prime Minister Bield unveiled the IOU on the mandate of our people. We voted and adopted it as behalf of young people. But to, on the tenth of January twenty twenty, Madam Ngozi said, the IOU that was unveiled by Prime Minister is. So screenshot this and share it everywhere, post it everywhere and let everybody see it. If you want to see it, go to her Twitter page, is there, where's the pull it at? No be with the former, now waiting she writes, now waiting to post. Thank you so much.
Uh Sony, some admin, please, so some admin, uh, uh, I've been raising your hand and some of them, you know, their battle is good, beating down. Please, you push them to them.
Yes, we are going there, we are going there. Um Okute BTV, please, those in homeland, when you pick the mic, be snappy about it so that everyone can have good time. Thank you. Okute TV, over.
Greeted.
Honorable Parawa, I, I think you called me before, before you allowed Kelo.
Uh sorry, sorry, honorable K, honorable K, please give a benefit of doubt from the person from homeland. After then you pick.
Okay, okay, please, yeah.
Okute TV.
Okay. Good evening from my location. Here is doctor, if Ngozi can be a doctor, I'm also a doctor.
Yes, so.
Address me as a doctor.
Oh, Kute.
Um. You know, when this thing start, I now call uh my executive, we do meeting in Ubuta County, how to help our men on ground because we can't be here and folding our hand without doing anything. Yesterday, I, I come yesterday fundraising, uh me and the Mazze David. Then we connected for yesterday and I have made the payment. I've sent you, Mazze Sonya Barawa, I've sent you the receipt. And the, and so Van Van Van, we, we paid it through uh BLT, uh 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 USB to repay the direct. And today, I don't know, I have asked my admin, admin to call a meeting, understand, for long. I don't know whether it's here. But on behalf of Ubuta County and I'm using this opportunity to call every Ubuta county council to join the fundraising. So we are, we, we take the mantle by ourselves. We say this is our fight. We need to fight it by ourselves. That hasn't anybody for help. So we want to fight our battle on our own. So Ubuta County, now we contributed, um we want to support this fundraising on behalf of Ubuta County with twenty thousand AJ. And uh as usual, I will, we will still convert it and send it direct. So that is how we now, and we are using the opportunity, please, if you are in Ubuta and you are in Ubuta County, please support us, support our men on ground. Understand, this fight is for us. Please, Ubuta County is under all those states. So we are um supporting the, the fundraising and we are using opportunity to ask every Ubuta indigenous to support this fight. It's not for only one side. Let everybody support it. One, one, one thousand AJ is money, five hundred AJ is money, please, let us support this fight. That because, please. And I thank you, uh Mazze Sonya Barawa, and I, I thank you for your wonderful work and I thank you, our APN, thank you. You know, our APN is a gentleman, a man, a
They were, they were.
So much, my brother. God bless you for your good work.
Thank you. Honorable Pejuco, over to you, sir.
Uh okay, thank you and good evening. Uh greetings to, I will make it uh short because, you know, we in Europe here. It's uh already our, odd hour. Uh okay, uh honorable Parawa, I also want to remind you that even the fundraising that they, they are doing, they are duplicating it. So in all, it's like only one fundraising, uh they have done only fundraising uh from that time to now. Uh others are dupl- duplication. So ask yourself, do that mean good for our gallant men? Answer is no. Uh this critical, no. So we should all advise ourselves. And those in a home, uh uh in uh in the factory home, uh please know that we are behind you. We are all, all in this together. Nobody is different, uh no matter what, we are all in this. So I want to also support Aludo with uh the sum of fifty Ajema. Uh also pardon the, uh the new admin, he said he had a, a network issue lately. So maybe that was why he could not connect uh properly. So honorable Emenike, so if you pay, you can just send your receipt to honorable Emeka. Honorable Emeka is here, is a commissioner, so that he records everything that is uh, uh from Aludo in one, in one box. Uh that is also.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, fifty Ajema for um Aludo also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, honorable.
Thank you, thank you, honorable K. Thank you. We come to Paul Ajuko. Paul Ajuko. Uh Paul Ajuko, over to you.
Uh good evening, sir, here. Protocote as have, uh this is Paul Ajuko, Paul from uh Anoma Administrator Anoma. The new Anoma administrator because of uh what is happening in Anoma with the administrator. We created a new platform, which I am heading. Although it has been a tug of war, but God is helping us. So we are normal, we are donating hundred, hundred thousand AJ. And some of our people that are, that were here, so some have left here. I think Dr. Kaf, Dr. Kaf, ten thousand AJ. Dr. Kane, five thousand AJ. Others, I don't know, maybe, but when they will be able to remit others. Thank you, sir. God bless us here, in Jesus's name.
Uh thank you, thank you, thank you, watching.
Uh thank you so much.
Come to Edel Uchenna, Edel Uchenna, over to you. Edel Uchenna, over to you.
Yeah. Good evening.
Dewo.
Am I coming up?
Dewo, Dewo, we can hear you, yes.
Mazze Sony, Mazze Sony, Mazze Sony.
Someone is on the line, someone is speaking, I gotta wait, somebody is speaking.
Okay. Had no lean me, that's a true, quite a nice day. We are, I, I did together. Uh I heard Denise, the one who was there today. I try carrying in uh in a hollow. I was so scared, I was very, very angry with the person that I am discussing with. I did, I trimmed up all these things. I say, when do all these things start? Why would we have the one that happened there on a, you know, on a, you know, so two days ago, dead a dog? That are all these things not happening like this. Just a few days, a few years, yeah, what is happening? So he has to correct me. Uh like the other guy that, that say, he throw you. So, he still has that encouragement, eh, like the other guy that, that, eh, he throw you, because of, eh, Alawa, because, eh, he, and because of, eh, that is, is indeed. I like the, the, the story he gave, all of the, eh, is because of, because of, that all of us are here. Like I said, it's not from any other thing, like I used to say, I have, so for ten, five years now, I started from myself. From myself to be there, then definitely this movement, from definitely this movement to I P U B, down to autopilot, understand? So we can never go back, we can never, we can never come, understand? Then based on our admin, in any word, so that, eh, Madame, or our sister, she gave, that, eh, everything. So thank God that many people are thankful to remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Eh, so, okay, losing all this thing, so in all, like yesterday, we pray, I pray the one I prayed yesterday. So today, I'm praying, okay, thousand AJ, I'm praying two thousand AJ, but I will pray that one within.
Okay.
For very military, I don't have, but I will pray within the city, thank you very much, everybody should continue, let's push out all this thing, we should spend all, and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, watching, okay, thank you.
Uh. So much.
Uh, Lobe.
Thank you.
Lobe, over to you, make it snappy, Lobe. Lobe, and, eh, please, if you need your camera on, start your camera now, too many to start camera, you need your camera on, start it, Lobe, over to you. You need your camera on, start it now. You need your camera on, start it now. If you need your camera on, start it now. If you need your camera on, start it now, eh, our Minister of Culture, I was looking for you. Come here to the screen because you are on traditional way, you disappeared before, now I don't catch you. Uh huh, stay there on the screen because you there on traditional way. Anyone on, eh, traditional way, you will come to the screen, so when you see yourself on the screen, don't be shy, uh huh, if you shame shy, you go pay fine. If you shame shy, I see this screen, you go pay fine, hmm.
But Sony, something is covering your screen, now remove this thing from the screen, please.
Wait, 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 I'm coming. Lobe, you were called to pick the mic, you're not ready, Uncle Chris, Uncle Chris, over to you. Uncle Chris, over to you. Uncle Chris is not ready, Neoma, Neoma, over to you.
I'm ready, a very wonderful evening to, to everybody.
They were.
Good evening.
And it's, eh, it's a honor, and a privilege, what's more to be here. Eh, we have been here, we have been coming here and going, but there's something that I want to put in the mind of each and every one of us. Number one is that about six hundred and forty thousand people left Egypt, to Canada, according to the Bible. It was only two people were able to make it to Canada, Joshua, the son of, and Caleb, the son of Jephaniah. Other people, the Bible called the mixed multitude, those mixed multitude, we are perish in the wilderness, there's only two, and the new people that they born. I, I don't want us to, to be feeling pity for ourselves because we are the fortunate people. If there are people that supposed to be feeling pity for themselves, let them be feeling pity for themselves. What do I mean by this, I tell somebody the story of when we were in religious school. We were given assignment to write an essay, what you know about God, and what you know about Satan. The person we are writing, and writing, and writing, and writing, there's nothing in about God. By the time it was time to write about the Satan, the, the invader said that the time is up. And he wrote the notes, there's no time for the devil, we should not give this woman time, and there's no time for the devil. I don't have much, I'm a very good orator, I'll make my speech very, 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 very short. We should not give time for the devil, we should not be discuss about that woman, she's not important, we discuss important issues, we decide to get fund. And, and eh, support our men on ground, I'm from Aludo, I've been at the forefront of other states. If I'm not mistaken, I'm not trying to exalt ourselves above measure, I have to be realistic here. And eh, by the grace of God, I've seen wonderful men from Aludo, yeah, I've seen Okowo, I've seen Wajis, I've seen eh, other people, other people that didn't even know that from Aludo. But I keep on making us proud, yesterday, we were fundraising, two days ago, we had stopped fundraising. I would make a little pledge, a little token, always, we don't mind, this evening, I want to call the, and that would have, my top, ten thousand, on my behalf. Since my, my ex-soul administrator is not here because of the network issue. On behalf of Aludo State, I pledge twenty thousand Mira, plus the ten thousand Mira I pledge, it will be thirty thousand AJ that we are pledging.
Thank you for.
Thank you so much for giving the opportunity to speak.
Uh huh, AJ, AJ, AJ.
Thank you, thank you for thirty AJ.
AJ, AJ, thank you, sir.
Thirty thousand AJ, not thirty AJ, thirty thousand AJ.
Thirty thousand AJ, thirty thousand AJ.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, eh, Honorable, over to you, and so, and, eh, Ica Administrator. Ica Administrator, you are next, after Honorable, over.
They were no.
They were.
They were. They were, eh, I don't, you know, I don't know how to talk, I don't talk so much, eh, eh, I want to support, eh, because I've been hearing, eh, 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 different, Aludo, 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 you know, or, or Aludo, I'm hearing so much here. Eh, I, since eh, Aludo, only Aludo is in this, that we are doing this fundraising for. I said, but no, I have to come and represent my state, if they are not here, my state, because we, we never, we never, we never they behind. So, from me, my side, I want to support, eh, Allu, eh, Allu State, let eh, Allu State also named to be, eh, eh, flying. Not only Aludo, Aludo, so I, I will support, I will support Allu State with fifty AJ, fifty thousand AJ.
Fifty thousand AJ, thank you.
You, thank you.
Thank you, eh, my honorable, hi, Agini.
Ah, Agini.
Honorable, what may you say, you don't know how to talk, you won't come put eh, eh, put eh, competition.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Allu State, thank you, Ica Administrator, over to you.
Oh, thank you. Good, being everyone from this direction, eh, um, it's a pleasure to be here at this moment. Um, I would like my words to be very few, we thank God that, eh, Ica is getting back to its feet. Because the administrator, the secretary, and the kind of politics that playing and trying to save everybody to that direction. But we said, no, this is the only way to make it happen. So, um, just about, eh, a week now, we came together and eh, did a little election. And eh, my very self speaking was elected as the administrator of Ica State. Whereas we, eh, Godwin Majuma, my deputy, so we are back again. So on behalf of Ica State, we are giving one hundred and twenty AJ, one hundred and twenty thousand AJ. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and God bless you, your friends.
All right, Sony, let me, let me chip in in that areas.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, thank you so much, eh.
Oh, you're speaking, great, Mazi great, are you the one speaking?
It's great, yes, it's great, I speaking. Okay, eh, so, eh, let me just use this moment to, as a message to other admin. If your state is, eh, the admin of the state is not online, it may be, we notify that some of them, they say that they want to be neutral. And even your money, they hold it, and eh, you want your state to, not to be stagnant, and you want your state to move forwards. Um, you do nice by organizing yourself, and they put notification to federal. Then federal will appear in your states and monitor how you people organize yourself. Oh, we are running a government and we are following the pattern of P M. Many admin of the states, before you start functioning, P M will approve you. Likewise, in any states, if you are the tricky of the states, admin, deputy, and secretary, who start functioning. The acting prime minister must be aware of it. And this is a message I just want to pass to other admin, or it may be your states. The admin is saying that you want to remain neutral, and he wants your state to move forwards. Put the notification to acting prime minister, there, he will give you attention and address you people, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, our honorable, thank you, we continue, we come to, eh, Jewel, Jewel Okere. Jewel Okere. Jewel Okere, over to you.
Good evening to everyone in the house, my honorable minister, good evening, sir, our A P M, good evening. Thank you so much, this is a very big opportunity. Because, eh, when this Joseph, Ekati Keb, expired Keb, once again, hospital, expired, came, the wave was so much in Ibanez State, scattered all executives. We are carried away, the money, everything was paid to that Islamic account, I confronted the finance, it's the finance, eh, minister. He said, of things, so, not to make it brief, everything were shattered, but by the grace of God, eh, I stood my ground with some people that eh, knew that that is very wrong place to go, and our mind is made up, because we are at a point of no return, and nobody can change our mind. The foundation labor, P M, Simon Eba, is what they're standing on, so, behalf of Ibanez State, I'm still admit. Eh, we're supporting the front, because that is only we can conquer the enemy, the only way can solid, if I raise a phone and support our men on ground. And by so doing, eh, already, they not have given up, so, eh, behalf of Ibanez State, we are supporting with, eh, five thousand AJ. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you.
So I want to, this is our main that I. Yes, our main, eh, eh, prayer, people in there, please, I ask you to contact, and we're together and build our state, that's the government move forward, those are, please.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ibanez State is represented, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, salute you. All right, if you're in the diaspora, come out and support your state of Ibanez State. Um, we come to our honorable Neoma, 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 over to you.
Hello, everyone.
They were.
Hello.
God bless you all.
They were.
Yeah, I thank everybody, all of you, my Elohim continue empowering all of you. I thank our acting prime minister, honorable Genkere, and all the honorables over there, God bless you all.
They were.
Yeah, no going back, because we are here for the freedom of our generation, yeah. Eh, there is no need of, eh, you know, enjoying life, or, doing anything that makes you happy and your origin is under siege, and our people have no freedom for decades. And we have been on this since I was born, so, my people, I thank you all for standing on the truth, no matter what. The Lord is with us, and eh, I urge everybody to stop saying anything bad on these men that have sacrificed everything, getting, getting to, for years, struggling. We can't looking back to defend our people, to defend our homeland, to defend our origin, we are all in diaspora. Because they fought for their freedom, Italy, I know thirty, nineteen, eh, forty-three, and nineteen four, sorry, I have some code. Eh, nineteen forty-three and the forty-five, how it was terrible here, they all ran to Argentina, ran everywhere, and America came to help Italy. And we are in liberty, yeah, we are fighting for our just cause, so just, uh, shout it, God, please. I'm supporting my people, Ezian, eh, my Biafran States, Ez, and eh. I have, eh, you know, send the fifty AJ, I send it to, eh, honorable Genkere, and also Sony has seen it, I support my people, please. It's not a bad thing to, to support where you were born, and we must defend where we, we have, if our o- origin was taken by invaders, that means we are all nothing, and God forbid it will not happen. Please, all the mistake people are making, let me round up, I don't want to take your time, eh, all the mistake people are making. Those that don't understand, we must stand on where we are when our P M was somewhere. And we are praying by almighty power of Elohim that P M will soon join us. So, eh, eh, no one can tell me to stop what we have been doing, and where we have been contributing, our, eh, our, eh, you know, donations when P M was with us, why should we change that? So I remember where I am before P M was with us, and I supported, eh, our P M, eh, Simon Eba. I'm supporting the acting, acting P M now, yeah, so, we continue doing the right thing, please, please.
Thank you, thank you.
And we, God bless you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Love you all, yeah, sorry, I could not be on a traditional way, that will be another day. Was in Takachon or Wellington.
Okay, I mean, like.
Thank you. Honorable, oh, sweet connection.
Let's call, eh, call people from homeland first because of the time, and you know, that home, that, that, one of the reason we are fighting to live, eh, to be on our own, so we can also have, eh, electricity, we know the challenges they having. They don't always have electricity, please call, eh, people from the north, thank you. Yeah, I call on Ifai Chukumba, Ifai Chukumba, over to you. Ifai Chukumba, on me yourself.
Okay, eh, eh, thank you, thank you, honorable, eh, information minister, Mazi Sonia Barawa, thank you, thank you, our A P M, eh. You, you guys are doing a lot, eh, I'm, I'm from Aludo State, and I'm, I'm going to make a donation of, um, of two thousand AJ to Aludo State for what we are doing. Also, I want to make announcement here for all Aludo State citizens who are interested. We are organizing a five hundred men that will be contributing one AJ every week to the B D F for the protection of our mothers and, eh, siblings here in, in, in Biafran land. So if anybody who is an Aludo person that is interested in joining these five hundred men in the homeland who will be contributing, eh, continuously every week, one thousand AJ to what we are doing. Eh, it's gonna help a long, eh, to go a long way in helping in what we are doing, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, we call on Chezy, Chezy, on me yourself. Thank you, thank you. We call on Chezy, Chezy, unmute yourself. Chezy, unmute yourself.
Right, good evening, Mazze, eh, Minister of Information and Communication, my ever. Eh, acting prime minister, Mazzyogbe Chubunkere. And all protocols duly observed in this very eh, first ever fundraising. After the call to question of our prime minister. So, I welcome you all. And eh, acting prime minister, please, I want to solicit eh, something before I go ahead. Next time we will be having this fundraising. Um, in back home Biafra land, let us make it eh, between three, four PM over there. Because eh, we understand the secret challenges over there. And then, it is not healthy for anyone to, after the fundraising around, maybe one or two, to start heading home. Wherever he is coming from. And because of network challenges and all those things, please, next time we are to have this fundraising. Make it from their time there, that is three thirty or four PM. So that before ten o'clock we are done, anybody can find his way home. The security challenges there is not something to, to ride home about. So, I will announce thing, my song, that eh, there is no place like home. Eh, home sweet home. Eh, when you travel south, east, north and west, you will always come back home. According to African legal win. So, we are here and then, to help the men on grounds and to help ourselves. When we say we are helping the men on ground, we are making mistakes, we are helping ourselves. Because you are there in Italy, you are there in Brazil, wherever you are and enjoy yourself. Remember, there is a place that your neighbor was buried. They born two of you, your twin brother was buried somewhere, or your twin sister was buried somewhere. They born two of you and one was buried, one was taken, which is you. So, you must endeavor to remember that very place, to pay homage to that very land. And that land is the land of the rising sun. So, on this note, I will be supporting my humble home and sweet, it's state of Ibanee. With thirty thousand AJ. So, may God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, our minister, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We come to, um, we need those from the. Eh, AK Mesier, Romanu, over to you, unmute yourself.
Yeah, Sunny, eh, thank you once again. Eh, update eh, from Alanso state, one of our brother, Mazzy Okwe. Eh, twenty thousand AJ. I'm making it eh, one hundred and eighty-six thousand AJ from Alanso state. Thank you once again.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We come to.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Dazion. Dazion, unmute yourself. Dazion.
Yeah, so, yeah, one of our brothers by name, Oban. He donated forty thousand AJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, you, okay, we move down to. Um, we need those in the homeland first, because of their time differences. Eh, my Jesus, my Jesus, unmute yourself.
Eh, good evening, eh, this is just an update, please. I just want to say that eh, we have really organized ourselves at Aludo. Our admin is also here. And myself, please, if you're from Aludo and you have made donations. And I want to tell Ifai Mbah, who is eh, eh, talking of five hundred men, please. Contact the executive here, contact us, enter our platform. And eh, identify with your eh, county. God bless you, I just want to make this announcement, we will be submitting the, the list of our executive. In the next eh, in the next few days, we will be having a, a complete meeting. Please, I just want to make this eh, announcement that we are already organized. Everybody from Aludo should align with us, so that we can make it work. God bless you all.
Thank you, thank you, that is a good one, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, let me see, yes, my honorable Sunny.
Yes.
Second day, day good luck.
Let me see, inform Aludo peoples, as you organizing yourself. Eh, yes, still eh, inform our acting prime minister. So, every state that organizing yourself, you will be approved by him before you. Before you will make yourself eh, available. So, he is the one that approve your appointment. So, we are happy that you people organizing yourself. But after organizing yourself, don't waste your time to inform him, to him to approve it before eh, before. Everything will do it, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, we come to.
Thank you.
Eh, iPhone, iPhone, unmute yourself. iPhone, unmute yourself.
Yeah, good evening, eh, my honorable finance minister, good evening, our APM. All the honorables, it is to you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'm speaking from homeland and um, I just want to say this. Um, I don't know my admin from homeland and from Aludo state. ECAK county to be precise. And um, I don't know, I've asked questions on telegram. But no, no answer, so, on behalf of ECAK county. That's my county, okay, I'm making eh, donation of some of twenty thousand AJ. Of which I will convert, or convert to, to USD. Thank you.
Thank you.
You said you are from.
Okay, uh, I want to start, eh, do you know the account to pay to, right? To pay in?
Yes, yes, I, I have, I have the government eh, um, crypto account. So, that's where I normally make my donation.
Okay.
Okay. So, what state again you say?
Um, Aludo state, um, ECAK county.
Alright, can you contact eh, one of the media teams so that eh, eh, they can help you locate your admin, okay? Or, or lose state admin here?
Hold on, I'm trying to get eh, the Aludo state group.
Admin is not here, but um.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, can you go, can you all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we can hear.
Okay, um, the person you had just spoke, the Aludo state eh, Aludo state eh, group link. Is pasted here now in the comment section. So, you just click the link and join us, from there, you will make every inquiry and follow up everything, Aludo state.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, alright, um.
Thank you.
We come, who else there from homeland? Clemente Odebé, Clemente Odebé. Clemente Odebé, unmute yourself. Clemente Odebé, unmute yourself. Clemente Odebé, unmute yourself, not ready, eh, Wanda Abigail, over to you.
Greetings.
There were.
There were. I greet everyone present here today. Um, I don't know if um, the de facto minister, finance minister, who eh, has announced my. Donation from Wery State anyway. I'm supporting eh, my state with twenty dollars today. And I appeal to every Wery man, woman who is here, to continue to support our people back home. And we are doing this on behalf of our brothers and sister relatives and siblings who are back home. To continue to believe on our God sent angels. And believing what they're doing. May God continue to strengthen everyone of us here. And those who are going to return, because we know they are going to return. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Eh, honorable Betty, honorable Betty, over to you, your hand is up.
Yeah, I have not been able to have access, that's why I've been losing my hand.
Ah, okay, sorry, you're not co-host now.
Yeah, thank you.
You can mute yourself, thank you. Alright eh, we come over to Love God, Love God, mute yourself. Love God.
Love.
Over to you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone, good evening ministers.
There were.
Eh, cabinet members and the honorables here. I was wondering when I was going to hear Wery State. And thank God, I've been waiting. So, I am going to support my honorable state with two hundred thousand AJ.
Two hundred thousand AJ, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, you, thank you. I hope you know how to, your payment.
Of course.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, use eh, Islamic bank account.
That is impossible.
Yes, slam.
Thank you, thank you so much, Wery, thank you. Alright, Wery has been represented, eh, we come to Clemente Odebé, over to you.
Okay. I don't know which one to use now, let me, let me unmute myself.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, um. Do, do, do you see me?
We don't.
All this my head.
Yeah, you can hear.
All this my head, a little traditional wear, you are not seeing it.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, I'm even looking for those on. Start, start your camera, start your camera now, start it, start it.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I need.
Minister, minister.
Okay.
You picked me. Yeah, okay, I'm a man, I have Jesus.
He said.
Yeah, is it, is it?
Because APM, all cabinet, cabinet members, Ekellelemon. Eh, in the Biafran, Sonny Nala, Galal, Onala Toppa. Eh, in other words, if you're going home, no matter what it takes, you will continue to go until you get your fat ass. Eh, so, this is the journey we've started and eh, we'll continue. No matter the restrictions, I do not believe we should just ignore them, we should give way. While we are also doing what we are doing. But that's a matter for another day. I am supporting my brother Ulooma. Eh, we are from the same county council, and I'm from Aludo. I'm gonna support Aludo state with twenty thousand AJ. Eh, Acharaba County Council, where I come from, with ten thousand AJ, totaling thirty thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. Please, um, eh, all honorables in the house. If you are not speaking at the moment, just mute your microphone, so that we don't have echo. When it's time that you are called upon to speak, you can unmute yourself. Because I'm getting echoes from all angles, please, just mute your microphone until when it's time for you to speak, you can unmute. Okay, um, honorable Chinier, Wanda Chinier, our mother, you're on the screen, unmute yourself. Over to you, man.
There were no, good evening, everybody.
There were, man.
Good evening.
Greetings to my honorables and to my APM. Chinra Muneke is my name, I'm here to support Wery State with fifty, fifty AJ ma.
Thank you, ma, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, there, there were.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, eh, for those of us in diaspora, you just make your payment to the official website of the Biafran government. And then eh, you update us the receipt through the normal way, thank you. Eh, honorable Nena, your hand is up, over to you.
I have, um, no.
There were.
I have, yes. The first one is eh, there is one of us here from Aludo state, he's at work. He just called me to say I should let you know, if he can quickly. Make announcement of his decision of his donation, so he can go back to work. His name is Uche one one two. I'm not. So, I'm not member of us, from here in Lysan, eh, he gave two hundred and fifty. Her name is Neka. Is a queen. So, she want me to tell you so you can take the records. So, I want Uche to quickly do his own, then I'll follow him up quickly.
Okay, two fifty, right?
Thank you.
Uche one one two, can you?
Uche one one two, over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I greet you all, all the honorables.
There were, Mazze.
My, my APM, his excellency, I greet you, sir, thank you for your good job.
There were, thank you.
There was, sir, I'm sorry, I can't put my camera because I'm at work, as our mother say. And I want to make it quickly. I thank all the brothers who has eh, supported my, our state. Eh, engineer Innocent and eh, honorable also, honorable Mazzy Uoma. And eh, and the honorable barista, Cle- eh, Clemente. Thank you, sir, son, and our mother, honorable Nena.
Thank you.
I support my hour also, Aludo state, we hear too much Aluda, Aludo. So, I want to support also my own, our own state, my own state too, the fifty AJ ma. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
On our way down, on our way down, ma, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uche one one two. Thank you, sir. And eh, Bishop Clemente, thank you. So, I will also support, um, um, Aluno. I don't have access to the Biafran, eh, county in Biafran land, I don't know whether there anything like that exists. Otherwise, I will announce my own in a Jema, so I can pay directly in the government. So, I will be supporting Aludo state with hundred AJ ma.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, we now, oh, we see, is it Legos admin, we just saw now. Yeah, Legos admin, COA, over to you. COA, over to you.
Alright, I greet eh, my honorables in the house.
Please, I'm sorry, the lady I called her name, she supported with eh, two fifty, is it Kemba? I think is it Kemba?
It Kemba, okay, Kemba state.
Let me look at it, she sent, she want me to announce it for you guys, she has, I think she has already paid in the government websites.
It's not Aluno.
Um, no, not Aluno.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Kemba.
Um, yeah. Yeah, it Kemba state.
Kemba state, okay, thank you.
Two fifty, yeah, her name is eh, Neka.
Thank you.
Neka is a, is a, is a queen.
Thank you, thank you.
Kemba state.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. COA, go on, please.
Alright, um. Okay, eh, respect to my eternal leaders. Okay, uh respect to my eternal leaders. Uh Juco and Ifiong. Respect to. Our leader Mazin and Ano who is being incarcerated in Abuja. Respect to. Our prime minister. Mazesamonepa, who is being restricted currently in Finland. Respect to my APM. And every other ministers. Reps, admins. And every other Biafran. Who is making. In their different capacities to ensure the restoration of our dear country Biafra. The truth. Is very bitter, but we will continue with this approach both. It said that it is difficult. To accept the truth. And it is also more difficult to speak the truth, but we have decided to take the most difficult part, which is to speak truth. So those who are positioned to accept the truth. Should accept the truth, nothing more, nothing less. I'm happy to be on the truth side. Matter what has happened in our government. We have always remained resolute because it is in resoluteness. That we will win, inconsistency that will win. Um. We have only one. Uh, one objective and one business as Biafrans, right now. It is the liberation of Biafra. And this liberation has two legs. Three legs, I mean to say, the first leg is the Declaration of Independence which has happened in Finland. Between twenty ninth of October to December. Second twenty twenty four. The second leg. Is the defense of the independent that has been declared. And the third leg is. If the diplomatic engagement to get countries to recognize the independence that has been declared. So right now, we are focusing on the defense of our land. And every Biafran must consider this a priority. The time when we hide ourselves is over, you better come out now. We all need to come out now and support the defense of our land. Our angels are on ground to do the needful. I'm happy our prime minister has been honest enough to announce already to us that we have enough men. What we need now is fund. So in this regard, I have a couple of updates. From my comrades. Uh Marzi Joseph. Ohauku State. Is supporting with ten thousand AJ. Marzi Livinus is an estate. Is supporting with ten thousand AJ. Marzi Vincent. Ebony State is supporting with six thousand AJ. Marzi Chinoso. Admegu State is supporting with forty thousand AJ. And myself. Is supporting. With five thousand AJ. Thank you, my honorels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, thank you, thank you.
I have an update.
Go ahead.
Um, uh. Marzi Obi. Is supporting Enugu State with the sum of fifty AJ.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Wada.
You. Thank you, Marzi.
Over to you. Reduce your TV, reduce your TV, reduce your TV in one. Reduce, reduce your TV.
Okay. I will, okay. Can I? Okay, greetings, everyone. I'm just supporting Olus State with fifty AJ. Already I've sent the receipt to Marzi Abarawa, you will see it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Alright, we to John Lewis, John Lewis, over to you.
Oh, okay, good evening, everybody, um. I just want to support my state, Olus State with thirty AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we come to. Enno, Enno Horakbo. Enno Horakbo, over to you. You Frankie, stop tapping current for that place where you.
I will update, she has an update. Oh, one nine, welcome to the AJ, thirty thousand AJ. Oh, our brother said we will use thirty thousand AJ to support.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
After he gave me the information.
Enno.
Thank you.
Over to you.
Can I, can I go? Okay, good evening. Well, it's good morning for mine. Um, I'm standing on all protocols, um, I greet the APM. Marzi Aparo, I greet you. Uh my admin was here a while ago, but he left, so I just want to make the donations for our state. Ourobo Isoko State and we will be. Donating. With twenty thousand AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, my girl.
Yeah, for Gary Mavro.
I hope, but Marzi Sunny, you do understand this one. If you know this one, you know the other one.
Thank you. Anyone cut my tongue, oh, you don't win me for that one. Surrender. Alright, um, Anedo. Anedo, over to you. Anedo, over to you, unmute yourself.
I'm calling from Thailand, I want to support my state Admegu. With twenty AJ.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Marzi Uche one one two, your honor, sit up again, you have another update, or is it the previous one? Um, our admin Chinia, over to you. Texas admin Chinia.
Yeah, I'm right here. I greet you, no, sweetheart, thank you so much. Greetings to every wonderful Biafran. Uh we, we thank God almighty, you know, for giving us this opportunity to be here today. To remember our, our land of freedom. Greetings to my APM. Honorable Ogechku Mkeri, greetings to my honorable ministers. You know, I like your outfits, you all look wonderful, you know, when Biafra comes by the grace of God, oh, look at my mama. Mommy, come for today, well mama. Help you, love your outfit.
God bless.
Doctor Ruby, Doctor Joy, Professor Chuma, Doctor Nena. And all my media, wonderful media, um warriors, my media ministers. But I was sunny, I love your outfit, um bam bam bam, I love your outfit. Even my APM. Honorels back home, De Fato, and Okikabiamma. Bless all of you all, and may this year be kind to us, you see? And to our gallants men, I say God bless you all. May Chukwokikabiamma continue to protect you. May I make a request first before I proceed? I wanna make a request, um, my honorable information minister. So I wanna make a special request that uh we may have to hold a section of prayers. Against those who, who stood against our BDF. That provokes them so badly that they have to slow down, you know, um, their, their wonderful walk. They're by, you know, a lot of people being victimized by the terrorists. So because of these evil people that we are, you know, blackmailing our BDF. So we need a special prayers for them, you know, ego for, maybe see every single one of them that caused this havoc. Right? So we gotta please schedule a, a prayer section for them, we have to pray. On their head with fire and brimstone. Because they're not gonna go free, okay? So that's my request, that's my humble request. However, um I just wanna greet our people, um back home. I'm supporting Aludo. With thirty thousand AJ.
Thank you.
God bless every one of us.
Thank you, Chi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me just quickly give this one update before I forget, uh his name is Abbott James. Uh fifty, fifty AJ for our mobile.
Thank you, thank you, Albert, thank you.
Hello, thank you, thank you so much.
Can I quickly give this update, it has been for a long time, maybe not also forget. Yeah, we have our beloved sister Mkechi Anyoke. Mkechi Anyoke is giving fifty AJ. Uh supporting Ikemba State, fifty AJ supporting Ikemba State and our Russia rep. Our Russia rep in the name of Chukwe Meka is also supporting Olus State. Is also supporting Olus State with fifty AJ as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. We have fifty thousand AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you all, God bless you.
Fifty thousand AJ. From my teacher and eminique supporting Ikemba State. Thank you, thank you. And um Honorable Chinia. Voice of a prayer for the enemies of Biafra is approved, just like. Just like APM approved the prayer of God to sustain the life of Gohan to see the second of December. You guys prayed very well and your prayers worked. And while you guys are praying against the enemies of Biafra now, also remember Gohan again. That he will stay and see the liberation, the total liberation of Biafra. Thank you so much, we move. Chris M, over to you, Chris M. Chris M, over to you.
Um, quickly, um, I'm at work on behalf of Olus State, I'm donating the.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
These four hands have been up before Chris came, Adazion, COA Legos and Freedom.
Adazion just came up now. COA have just spoken, they just came back again. Um, Adazion, go ahead now.
Okay, more updates from homeland. Um, Oweri, we have a big girl, twenty AJ. Admin, ten AJ. Matt, ten AJ. Wada, Mata, fifty AJ. Um, there's another person, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I can't see his name. The person donated two hundred AJ.
Okay, I think most of them called it themselves, we got them down. Thank you so much, yes.
Called Lolo, Lolo. She paid into our accounts here. One thousand, one thousand eight. Eh, one thousand eight AJ, then he can now, five thousand AJ. The money we realized today in our De Fato uh account is two hundred and twenty seven thousand eight hundred AJ. So other people, I don't know if they have paid in money because I can't see it in our account here, or whether they will pay later.
I think some of them had not paid, they just announced it.
Okay, okay, it's alright, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, freedom for Biafra, over to you. Freedom for Biafra, unmute yourself.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Yeah, I, I just wanted to support Admegu with forty AJ. And it will, it will come along with my one thousand men contributions.
Okay.
And I will, I will post, I will post it on, on the victory for MNK.
Okay, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, thank you. I see you, over to you again.
Okay, and there were my honorels. Uh you meted. Uh Andrew, Aniamaste. When I spoke before, two thousand AJ, and also. Uh Lobbe. You called on him, but he didn't respond. Perhaps his phone uh is dead now. So he told me he will be donating ten thousand AJ, I will get to him later.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, is it extra because he already called? He already before.
Lobbe.
Uh huh, uh huh.
Why did he took Lobbe before, I don't know.
Yeah.
Uh you called him, he did not speak, maybe when I.
No, he did, he, he spoke. From Aludo, right?
No, not Aludo.
He's not. Yeah, he's from Lagos, but I thought he's. Okay, okay, that's fine, because.
Problem, if we spoke, there's no problem.
Yeah, I have ten thousand here for Lobbe.
Alright, alright, thank you, thank you. Said you paid through Lagos.
Okay.
Good, please, we have a, a quick update from uh our sister Helen. On behalf of Ourobo Isoko State, fifty AJ. Helen Peters, on behalf of Ourobo Isoko State, fifty AJ.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Jare, can you give us? Biafra Defense Forces jingle from there?
We say our one hand up.
But we've taken that hand, okay, another hand just came up, I'm over. Let me look for that.
I'll forward it to you on Twitter now. Okay?
Okay, okay.
On Twitter, you just shared it. Yes, pick the hand, pick the hand that is up.
Yeah, uh Marzi Mobi. I'll meet yourself, Marzi Mobi, uh you need the camera, please, I don't know, you are not co-host, uh please, I'll meet your camera.
Okay, that's fine anyway. Uh greetings, everybody, uh greetings, my APM. Uh you're looking, you're looking sharp. Everybody here is just looking yummy shots, like Biafrans, like if I am. You know, um I thank you all for being here. I thank all those who are back home, who have identified themselves with their different uh states. It is very important that we realize that this fight is not just for those in diaspora, it's for all of us. We have to start identifying with our states and doing the right thing, or the very, very important, you know. While we're trying to respond, to do what we're doing, everybody has to put their hands on deck. It's not just all about you hearing or seeing, respond, respond. Where you are back home, if you have the safety, you have to do the right thing. Identify with your states, at least Kaya's state, Maro, the camera, your state. Anya would be the most important thing. Anya would be the most important thing. And for those who are yet to realize the importance of supporting us, if you go to the media today, go to the handle of our A P M, you will see all the slotters that have been recorded between just this week that is gone. These are Biafrans. They didn't ask them, were you supporting the Biafran liberation before they killed them or not? They didn't ask none of these people these questions. So do not wait until it happens to you, until the root begin. Those that it has already happened to, that their families have died. Let it be a legacy that you stand on the same fight that your family member, knowing what it was fought for. And I knew I know, at least I didn't do forever, where we call our home. It is important that all of us in the United States start listening to what is going on. All of these people who are dying, they are just, they're just like your, your younger brother, your, your older brother. Your father, your mother, they are just the same thing as them. Anything can happen to anybody. But if you're living in a place where we have this kind of security that we have right now, the only thing you can do is to wish the same thing for your people back home. You know, we have the number of the people that can do it. So why are we trying to stress those that are back home who don't even have anything to eat? That's not saying that they shouldn't do their own part if they feel the need to do it. But this thing lies on our shoulders to do this thing, and I get, we're able to do it. It wouldn't take us anything to do it if we just decide to do the right thing. If I knew Kuli Fabu Makando in the bay, so that we can always have a place we call home. Because just a million of us, five hundred thousand of us, we can do it. In a check, uh, Simon or uh, P M, put up, they are two coruna fundraising again, is that what you're waiting for? Before we can do what we're supposed to do? Can you check that? What we are fighting is a war. In war, they don't ask you means, so me sorrow. And the people we are fighting are terrorists, you can see their display of terrorism. Everybody should wake up. Because I'm supporting Alasus State with fifty a gemma today. Darlo, everybody, let you go, Kabiama bless us all. Darlo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, honorable, I'm happy.
Alright, we have uh, uh, Dick four seven E. Please unmute yourself, sir.
Uh, good evening, Biafrans. Uh, uh, my name is Emma Carbon, I'm from Ikumesi State. I don't know if anybody has donated for that uh state. Since I'm here and from there, I have to do the nifu. I will support today with fifty a gemma on behalf of Ikumesi State.
Awesome, awesome.
I'll send the message to Maryland uh rep.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you.
Answer your state, support your state, there was.
Alright, we have our Biafran man. Biafran man, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Really, really, this is a wonderful move, at least to show all those children of darkness that we are still controlling. Where you are getting, man? I am calling from Australia, my name is Okichuku Adrian, I'm a D N O Australian rep. You know, so I really thank all of you. Especially our three wise men and more especially our A P M. It's not easy to face this kind of challenge within this, uh, within one month and still stand. I say, may God bless three of you for your hard work. It's not easy. And all, every other person that is standing behind everything with good faith, not all those that are struggling here and there that don't know where they are standing. You know, I am from Allo, I can see mommy comfort here also. Our head in the culture department. So I greet all of you. I will be supporting my, our state, Olu State today with the sum of fifty a gemma. There was.
You so much. Well, thank you.
Thank you, my brother.
Awesome. We have our indefatible, uncorruptible and powerful professor. Professor Chuma.
He led you now. Hmm, dear man, dear man.
Prof, what, what, what about your camera?
No, because I know dress like una, so.
I had to hurry up to dress myself.
I beg, una looks so beautiful, so handsome. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. And I really, really thank our onion dude, Mazinam Decano. His excellency, Ebba Simon and Joko A P M. We miss both of you. But we keep that torch burning. I thank all our brothers and sisters, the angels back home. God's grace, protection and blessings. Our brothers and sisters back home, I also thank you. While we mourn with the families that the Nigerian state terrorists visited. We are all mourning. But we shout out. May God console our Biafrans, the images that we saw. Only God will take away the trauma that Nigeria state has caused. But I thank all of you for standing firm. And we keep standing. We must be free. We don't belong with these cannibals. And we must be free. So today, what my family wants to do is to acknowledge our media team. You know, we see you all. We can't even do this without you. Passing from our sister Betty, on rep Betty, so beautiful.
Thank you, professor.
Our honorable Paul, the five 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 vision, oh my God. When he teaches, even if you had the dumbest person, must learn. Thank you. The van, 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 honorable van, van, van. I watched your prayer and I say, you say to that. Everyone peddling malicious lies and propaganda. May lies and propaganda live with them. They meet lies and propaganda, they look right, they meet lies and propaganda. Nothing good will ever come their way. As we keep Biafra and Biafra land, we kick them into the ocean, salt. Because when people come out with their hearts and clean hand to volunteer, the key word is volunteer. And all the people are somewhere carrying myths and disinformation. Assassinating the character of their fellow human beings. It is unacceptable whether you are doing it knowingly or unknowingly. For people that have worked with me, I say to people, when you have no information, direct information, don't pedal. So van, 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 I say, he said to all the prayers. He said. honorable minister Abbarawa. Thank you, sir. For all you do. And now to our ex-media team, oh my God. You can never defeat a volunteer army. Because you are all the armies of Biafra. Sometimes they are on a twenty-four hour shift, even more than twenty-four hours. The ex, the Biafra Republic government in exile, media team on X, they are there. The minister is there with them. Hey, honorable A P M. One day I saw you twenty-four hours, you were sitting there. Everyone turned immediate team. Thank you so much, our media gurus. I can't really name you all because you are so many, I don't wanna miss anyone. From the host, the co-host, the contributors, the listeners that give thumbs up, love, hundred percent. We thank you all. You go to that X page to serve as good ambassadors of Biafra Republic government in exile, you do that. You push back on propagandas and malicious lies, you do that. And on top of that, you raise funds. Talk about multitasking. These great men and women, they are not paid. Rather they spend their own money. They spend their own time for Biafra. We love you all, we thank you all. And on behalf of our media team, my family will support with two hundred a gemma. Thank you very much. And to all the.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ministers, directors, the reps, administrators, the liaison officers, thank you so much. A P M, all of you, you guys look good.
Thank you so much.
Honorable professor, I'm going to salute you for all you do. Uh, we take Amaka's iPhone. Amaka's iPhone, over to you, unmute yourself. Amaka's iPhone, unmute yourself. Amaka's iPhone, Amaka, unmute yourself. While we wait for Amaka to struggle with her phone, C O A. C O A Legos admin, over to you, your hand is up. Amaka, you have the mic, you can speak now, Amaka.
Hello?
Yeah, greetings.
Oh my God.
Amaka's iPhone, Amaka, unmute yourself. Amaka, reduce the volume of your TV and speak up here in the. Amaka, speak up, reduce the volume of your TV and speak in the zoom.
Am I coming out?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, Jesus.
We hear you all.
I don't know how to do this.
But we can hear you, go ahead.
Am I coming out?
Loud and clear. Not coming out.
Oh, gee, oh my God.
People can hear us, go out and come back in.
Okay, do not hear anything. Wait, 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 um, Amaka, uh, increase the volume of your TV.
I hear you.
You can hear us from your TV and continue talking.
But she cannot hear what she's saying, that's why she's saying, oh my Jesus.
No, wait, I hear from TV, but I can't hear from my phone, so if she increase the volume of TV, she can hear us there and then respond.
Okay, see you. While we are still waiting for Amaka to connect, there is an update very quickly, anonymous from Italy, supporting Olu State with twenty a gemma.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, C O A, go ahead.
C O A's hand has been up for a long time, so I think he just put it down.
C O A, you want to speak or is the old one?
I think he's the old one because he's been up for a long time.
Okay, we wait for Amaka to fix her.
What's going on?
Amaka, we can hear you.
We can hear you, Amaka.
Okay, why she continue to uh struggle with that? Minister Jare, give us the B D F jingle. You got it from your Twitter message, I sent you.
Yeah, yeah, let me try and see, hope it plays, let me do that.
Just share the screen, share the screen. It's there now, go down. Yeah, it will play.
Fight against Nigeria is with everything in us, everything, and that's why we are defeating them. And those of you who do not want to depart on Biafra, pack your bag and leave Biafra land. I'm telling you, it is not going to be very conducive for you. Those of you who have been sabotaging Biafra from the time of memorial, it will not be very, very conducive. Pack your bag and go. I am telling you the fact, the people of Biafra has risen up and nothing will stop them. Our focus as a government is to make sure that we secure our land, make sure that our military, our army, our resistance fighters are funded. Make sure that we provide them with enough sophisticated weapon, enough material to protect our women and our children. The thing as a government, what we are doing is to make sure that our people are not getting killed like other people in Nigeria are getting killed. It is the responsibility of this Biafran government. And that responsibility we are going to take till the day of declaration of the restoration of the independence of Biafra. Let me tell you, we have just started. We will burn Nigeria now. Why us to protect our people, protect our land, we will burn them down. I want you to understand that if you want peace, you prepare for war. What I've seen for the past three years is nothing to write on about. It's not anyway in the media, our people are being butchered, cared, chopped off by the people who are supposed to be protecting those people. The people they call Gowan's in the southeast of Biafra has become the truth. This is the Biafra National Anthem.
Zorros, Fatiras, Tensiras, I love to go, man, beat! Yes, Ras Marzi, Ras Marzi unmute yourself. Ras Marzi unmute yourself. Ras Marzi unmute yourself. No, I can allow the thing to continue to play. Ras Marzi unmute yourself. Ras Marzi, over to you.
Yo. Greetings, Biafrans, greetings, one and all. Um, thank you all for what you're doing, A P M, blessed, blessed Lord. The Information Minister, Deputy, and each, everyone that is doing this, all of you, we know that you are all warriors, warriorses where you are. And, uh, since we are representing our forty states, I would like to, uh, dedicate some, some, something for. Um, certain kind of people that pose themselves in the place of, uh, in the, in a wrong place where they're not supposed to be.
Do you need your camera?
Uh, I will say like.
You need your camera?
Yes, go for it.
Oh, yes, sir.
Go for it, go for it, go for it, go for it. Let you give me signal now.
Yeah, just click, click, click on to open the camera. Click to open the camera, open your video, okay. Unmute, unmute yourself now.
Alright?
Yeah.
Okay. I beg, make you now, I speak some foul language.
No, no, sound with. No, no, speak foul, no speak foul, if you, if you speak chicken bed, no speak foul.
What if, what if I choose foul, foul language?
Uh, if we do foul, foul, no speak foul.
No, but you got to, you got to have best way to say, um, our rock, rock say it gets what they call it, so if you want to talk to Iko Koko, you have to talk to with your bad language, now, I mean.
No, you know, you know, go follow, uh, Ras, you know, go follow as a madman, they dance for Market Square. He said, make you follow and dance because you want to prove a point, you end up showcasing yourself as a madman. So you have to use.
No, when, when Commander Ross make even picture of, of, uh, Iko Koko, so you know me say in the, they know the same category, okay, make her come that before you go understand me. I go like this. People's Club of Nigeria, they are Joe Mume, People's Club of Bugo. So many. They have my way go, have our hands and dibbo, and out man down for the yo, Biafra go now endo. Do you know what it takes to be a member of the People's Club of Nigeria? At least ten thousand dollars, at least ten thousand dollars, at least.
Sunny, I beg, project, uh, last time, make last, make the image bigger, please.
That, that's exactly how she presented that there.
Last time I went, that's my, you have to start from the top. I just give him a larger audience.
Yeah, I, I want him, I want him to come to the bigger screen.
A bigger screen, please.
Uh, oh my god.
You have to start from the top.
I know, give me a laugh, oh. Um, okay, let's go like this. Uh, where is Ras Kimono?
He must be there. He don't go and do not, he don't want come like the foul language, you know, see, Nigeria not be foul language, you Nigeria. You know, see, you must see how I take with the argument. I start from the top, please. Okay, anyway, first of all, before we start, you have to just imagine Marzi Namdikan. Marzi Namdikan say, if he sees anybody who says he's a proud Nigerian, he just despise the person, the person as a animal. Marzi Simon Eba, before the whole world, hold the, the passport, take medals and send back to them. And somebody who just posed herself in the seat of a place that doesn't exist in our government. Comes to say a different thing, then I have to go because me as a Rastaman, you know, when I listen to all those kind of songs, it's always irritates me because what they praise is money. But she came and bore witness to it, she was so truthful to that, actually, because this is what they represent, then I have to dedicate this song to her. People's Club of Nigeria, they are Joe Mume, People's Club of Bugo. So many Biafrans, if you have my way go, have our hands and dibbo, and the old man down for the yo, Biafra be your endo. Do you know what it takes to be a member, a full member of the People's Club of Nigeria? At least you must have ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars in your account, to be a part of them. Now, I tell you, if you're a full-fledged or you are affiliated or whatever, how they call it, so anyway, question to them, question to them, question to them. Question to them, they know like question, but question to them, question to them, question to them. I realize that when somebody asks a di- a difficult question, another question, they just take the person out. Just as opposed to Marzi Namdikan and also opposed to Simon Eba, Simon Eba will tell us, not to even calling him. Let one Nigerian call him, people who has, go have a different opinion. But now, he wants, sometimes even he's not satisfied with the hardness, he say the most difficult question you bring it, but this one now, they bring you small question. And then he wants to tell you that, you know, I spoke to Obaseki every now and then, he's my friend, my class, my classmates, schoolmates, and all, all these things. And he gives the Obaseki, the phone number of, uh, your representative to go and talk, what does that one do? Because that one has no power, cannot be louder than millions of Biafrans who spoke in the self-refereendum. So this is an insult to intelligence of people who can think, so now, my question is. My question is. P M unveiled the D forces, you say it no makes sense. He unveiled the C R C, you say it no makes sense. Charter that is now the law, you say it no makes sense. Biafra headquarters, you say it no makes sense, but it no makes sense. Yeah, to psychiatric patients, that's senseless to psychiatric patients. When P M unveiled the bridge headquarters, it was spectacular. We all followed every movement and everywhere it went, the way we adapted it, the way we unfolded it, and everything was so spectacular. Even some people went there still in flag, some people came there, say if it was loud or true, they will come and apologize, but they never apologize when they realize. That it wasn't the way they were saying it, so spectacular was that. And now we take the headquarters of your breakaway government, taking Biafrans with you in a mad people's house. What a thing is a shame, oh, what a shame, so it no makes sense. It no makes sense to psychiatric patients, yes, it's nonsenseless, only to.
What a shame.
What a shame. It is such a, so when, when demand, now that all of a sudden, you are giving us unnecessary burden. But because of the truth that is based in the charter, Obato Biafra often tell you, told us, that our template is not through bomb, through bomb. Simply means is not focus, focus, it is in the open, we're not hiding it, it is there, it is the charter that is your law, he's a master at law. The man studied law and he knows what he's doing, he said, his knowledge, we know what we're doing, we know our rights before the war. We are standing shoulder to shoulder with every human being on earth because we know the charter, we know the law. So right now, you want all of a sudden to give us unnecessary burden. But the truth remains so golden, now your address is at the psychiatric hospital or whatever that is. Yes, because I tell them, if you are not charter abiding, you are not law abiding, Biafrans, we are law abiding, tell you to Trump and Biden. If you are not charter abiding, you are not law abiding, Biafrans, we are law abiding, tell you to Trump and, what are? And just, I salute all the angels, I'm here to support Azan States, I've not been all the way with everybody, but I did hear Azan, only Aludo, Aludo. All of us be Aludo because we want to do for Azan and the whole of Biafra. Or to represent each other, I take thirty A G M, they support, uh, Azan, I sent it already to Austria representatives, so, and it's already paid, they actually. So, I say, Biafra stands, watching those who can understand, showing them how to stand, hoping the wisdom.
Rastaman, Rastaman.
Rastaman, I beg, let us get. Let us get the chorus part of this psychiatric hospital, is it? What a shame, what a shame, psychiatric hospital, what a shame. Psychiatric hospital, what a shame, what a shame.
Barawa, what you happen, say, no say mad person know no shame, now the brother of the mad man know the shame.
Yeah.
That's so.
That's true.
That's true. For the mad people. Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rastaman.
Thank you.
Blessed Lord.
Thank you, okay, we come to, uh, our professor, our professor want to put fire for you, never go, never close your camera, professor want to put fire for you. Uh, put your camera.
Yeah, please, Sister Amaka, I don't know if she's still here, but she called me, yeah, she's still here, Amaka's iPhone.
Okay.
And she wants to make her donation, Amaka, over to you.
Amaka, open your microphone now, you see a command on your screen that says, uh, okay, over to.
Am I coming out?
Yes, we can.
Yes, you are.
Open your camera too now if you want, please.
Nope, no.
Okay.
Which Amaka is this, which Amaka is that, is that the Amaka that we knew from Canada?
No, this, this one is new, new Amaka, new Amaka, new Amaka.
Your name sake.
Yeah, no, no.
Hey, yeah, finally I'm here.
Yes.
Thank you, all my honorables, uh, admin. All, uh, protocol get observed, I hope I'm getting it.
Yeah, getting it.
I, I said I'm learning.
Yeah, you're getting it.
I fast learn, I'm gonna get it, because, um. Ija Abaye go na Anubah Josiah, Choya Josiah, they can.
That's why I J B. Why not J B?
They are, and never win us because we are standing on the rock, which is the man's place. So, um, please, Unewo Paniwa, am I a woman of scripture? I'm gonna talk with, uh, I'm gonna speak in the book of, um. First, Second Thessalonians, chapter two, verse fifteen, which says, therefore brethren, stand fast and hold the traditions. Which you have been taught, whether by word or our ep- ep- uh, epseto, epseto, okay. Why am I?
Epistole, epistole, you're supposed to read.
Epis. Stand the Bible, which means this Biafra, they have been saying that Biafra is a spiritual thing, and they, I have come to. I have come to understand it very well that it is really, uh, we hear more. Bible is talking about it, it said, brethren, stand fast and hold the tradition. He ha ha kuzi rani, that which Simon told us, that which Namdikan told us, that which Adme Gwadjuku told us, we have to stand on next. We are not gonna look left or right, we are going to stand on that tradition, which is Biafra going home, we are going home. No matter all the, the, the waves and all the storms, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank all of you. I want to thank my prof, uh, Chioma, I so much love your voice, I'm learning from you. And I'm going to give thirty thousand dollars. Well, thirty thousand AJ for my Enugu state. And I'm going to add twenty thousand AJ for Madame Ba to go to school. And learn how to behave, to learn manners. She needs to learn how to behave, she needs to learn how to talk. I was watching, uh, mistakenly, I saw her on Facebook. Where she was. Let's say Siakos, he say. Uh, 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 when I can, pointing like somebody that is selling land, that we are winning. Simon is winning, Nigeria is going down, we are winning. I was listening to her to hear the update, why we are winning, why Simon is winning. She couldn't even say.
I encountered the same thing, I was waiting for the update, I didn't hear it.
Hear it. It was what our APM, Odogu Okere. They said that you are not talking, you don't need to talk too much. He heard your mouth cable, he home mail. My people said, you don't ask what, how, 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 how big or how tall are you, but what did you do? It's not by, it's not by talking, it's not by, you face it, paka paka, it's not by email. Uh, that is, it doing all manner of evil, it is all about what have you done? Remember, like I said yesterday, at the end of this journey, we, we, what are you going to present? To Biafrans, to people that, that gave us, that has started this journey before us. So my people, I'm so happy. And I'm calling Ohio, you better come and join the moving train. Come and join the truth, forget about, um, thousands of people, millions of people. No, it doesn't matter how, how far, but how well. Because I am sure my spirit has never lied to me, that I am standing on the right side. And we are going home, and when we get home, we will tell a story.
Hmm.
So, um, Mazie Emenike, um. I'm Obi, I'm Obi, and, and, please, I sent you a text. Check your, 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 your WhatsApp. Please, I need to join the group that are paying for, um, space. I can actually have bomba to bomba, ononya welya wete, how much you have, just bring it. We must get there, whether devil likes it or not. Our people, they are dying too much, and it broke my heart. It broke my heart whenever I saw people killing, they are, they are dead, they were killing, they are killing them like nothing. That, like we are not human being. Therefore, my people, please, let us stand fair, let us keep moving. Don't wait for me, I'm not gonna wait for you, bring whatever you have, let, let us do it once and for all. When our PM comes out, you will be able to, oh, um. Ajay, uh, Ajayre, I sent you one text, I told you that you three wise men. When our PM comes out, he will hug you guys, he will tell, you guys will sit with him and eat. I don't know how joy, how joy it's gonna be for you guys who this. You guys hold it tight, and you didn't allow anybody to take it from you, and you will never allow anybody to take it. Thank you, all the ladies in the house, I don't know all your name, but God will bless all of you. Chineke na fu, all your effort, it's not gonna be unfair, we must get there, thank you, Ayud.
Hello.
Hello, Noah.
Thank you, wonderful star.
Thank you, uh, Adabete, please give your update. Adabete.
Thank you so much, sorry.
Go ahead with your update.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes. You mean talking to Biafrans?
No, the update you send.
Yes, I have resend another one.
Okay.
Just to, to clarify.
That is from you or from another person?
From me, from me, from me.
Ah, okay, which state are you supporting there?
Just a little talking for my state, Azani.
Azani, okay, thirty Ajema, thank you, thank you so much, thank you.
Yes, so can I talk a little bit?
Yeah, over to you.
Uh, thank you so much. I thank my fellow Biafrans, wonderful people, who never give up at any given time. We all know that in nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen seventy, that Nigeria could not win us, they did not defeat us. You know, despite the fact that they went to foreign people to support them and help them. They did not, and they can never defeat us. So I remember our late Odmegwajukume, he so rest in peace. And my greetings go especially to my leader Mazinamdekan, the man that never gives up. And extensively to my prime minister Mazie Simon Ekpa, nothing will happen to him. And he will come out and join us, and we will all make merit. And I thank Mister Nkere, the man that never wants. What the PM gave him to fall into the hands of the enemy. I want to remind Biafrans that when Goan was regretting fighting Biafrans. One of the things he said is that, um, if he had known that he could use Biafrans. To fight themselves, that he wouldn't have gone to conventional war. So anybody who is telling himself or herself. That the best way for him or her to go about this freedom fight is by following Shemoz Baal. Nkechi, blessing, Ezubika, also known as Ngozi or Rabwese. Then the person is lying to himself. But we know that Onyendu said it, that time is coming when the chaff will be separated from the wheat. So, having said that, we should all know that right now they are using our people to fight us. So Biafrans, you should use your tongue to count your teeth. Ngozi is not hiding herself, she has exposed herself enough. So those of you who think that, um, oh, I'm going to wait till PM. Or Mazinamdekan comes out before you donate, even if it is one dollar, he said it. You have to come and donate. And my sympathy and condolence goes to the families that have lost their darling ones. If you haven't lost anybody in this Biafra war, you will never have the real interest. To fight for freedom. I have lost and many others. So you have to be here with your whole mind. As it is now, I cannot vouch for anybody following what happened after our declaration in, in Finland. You can't trust anybody, we don't know how many other eyes of Nigeria in our midst. But if you are here to sabotage us, we raise the blood of all the Biafrans. That have gone into this to follow you and fight you, stay. That's all, we cannot continue to lament, we have to fight. No matter what Nigeria thinks, they will never defeat us. At least now, they have seen that our PM is not there, Mazinamdekan is not there. Yet, Doctor Bryson, who is ordinary Biafran, simply made the declaration. And our indomitable APM is standing in for us. So they will see now and know that we are not giving up, and we can never give up. More can in a now, why in in a, no, is sabotage, this our freedom, or balandini in a long guest, onyawa. He said, where the main assia simine, who is you. So, our barulumade gotchono, we will continue to pray. That no balandini ne wuna, this EJ Biafra. Girls Sunday, in a sabotage, morning, they who is you, morning, I see. Ofa do father, who is you, fa pota fa pretend ya, obuna PM pota today. Opota today, organa nu, ife, ife name, oh, way, uh, voice messaging, send the law. Uh, some of my colleagues. Obura because, ife kuda Amaka, but ono nola fa, Adadiora mother. The man spoke to Adadiora, most that he, he spoke to Adadiora. So it's a big evidence, all of them, onyebionasi alias in a chop power, in a chop position. This is not the time, if I abroad joke. And you're not on a formation of company. Or business transaction, if I have human blood. So my people, I don't have to continue, but I will continue to pray that. Onyendu Mazinamdekan and our prime minister will be released one day. Kakoto pota bani rwefi, thank you, my people, all hail Biafra.
Thank you.
All hail Biafra, devil, devil.
Thank you so much.
Devil, as we continue to move on, let us try to abstain from the war. But, um, we don't trust anybody at this time. We don't want to invite in that war, because all of us here, we are here because we trust Biafra and we trust. Our Biafra Defense Forces and our PM and our Onyendu and what we have on the table. If there is not trust, we will not go to anywhere, we will not achieve anything, so, thank you so much. Uh, Mighty Dot, over. Let's make it snappy, because we should be rounding up. Mighty Dot, over to you.
Yeah.
Yes, I can hear you, sir, I come to.
May come on, yeah, greetings, um. And Biafrans, greetings, um, our APM. Greetings, all the honorables, you all are looking very radiating here, very elegant. All I see here is, uh, when I see the way you guys, every one of us dressed here, the ones on the camera. You all looks like the gods and the goddesses that you are, princes and princesses, kings and queens. Um, and the light and the glory of Ukike shining on all of you. Um, you all are here today because you believe in something that is bigger than you. I wanna say a few things, um, real quick. I have been so, like I've been even struggling to eat today. With the kind of images, gory images that I've been seeing. My, I've been struggling to, you know, raise my energy, my vibration. This is heartbreaking. That the most sacred blood on this planet earth is being wasted. Not even like the way that chickens are being killed, the most sacred blood on this planet earth. Because we don't know who we are, because we are lost. I have a news for us, there is no sky daddy coming to save us. There is nobody coming to save you, no sky daddy that is coming to save you. Because you are the god that humanity is waiting to come and save them. That is where we lost it. We became so soft and so distracted and so weak. That is the people who are slaughtering us, who did what they did, who, these people that have been slaughtering us. They are doing this because they see us as sheeps, we are sheep to them. Because of one stupid religion that was brought to us. Over five million of us we killed, the sky daddy didn't come to save us. Since then, we have been slaughtered every day in outs, no sky dad is coming to save us. Until we wake up, until we wake up from our delusion. Knowing that we are the gods, we carry the, our bloodline is so powerful, that even the Caucasians fear you. That is why Simon Eba is being held. Because they fear what you are coming up with, what you're bringing to the world. I watch a video, that I've been trending over the few days, one burial of one guy. And I'm looking at them like, we are at war, and this kind of celebration is going on. In our land. Listen to me, now that I know why Mazinamdekan is too strong. Mazinamdekan, now I understand his secret, why he's still standing, because he said that. His debt is not for the living, he's fighting for those that have paid the ultimate price. And that is what have kept me going, why I'm still standing today. I swear to Ukike and to myself, if not, I would have abandoned this, for what I have seen so far. My debts right now, I swear, I will never leave this struggle. Because I will not be a betrayer to those that have paid the ultimate price. I will not be a betrayer to my ancestors. Doing something over and over again has been a different result. About Einstein says, it's a true definition of insanity. We keep looking up to this sky god and abandon our ancestors. In fact, let me stop here, but I'm going to support my state, where a state with three hundred thousand AJ. But let us wake up before it is too late, what is coming, what is coming? We need to wake up, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, my leader.
Yeah, um, Chinny, Chinny, I go over to you, thank you, Mighty Dot, go over to you.
Okay, um, devil, hello everyone, uh, please, um, this an update from Texas. From our dear Mazie Siwachuku. He's, um, donating fifty Ajema to the Owere, Owere, um. What's it called, Owere State, okay, fifty Ajema.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Devil. Where should he send the receipt to?
Just keep the.
It doesn't matter to anybody.
Keep, keep the receipt to yourself, keep the receipt to yourself, Chinny.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Ayachuku, over to you, Ayachuku. Ayachuku Ashewo, over to you, devil.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, Adazayor. Yeah. Good morning from here, Biafrans, greetings. Uh, wonderful, you guys are looking amazing. Sorry, I'm at work, we, we just resumed work today, you know, I've been, I've been, we've been off work since, uh, since last year, so we start today. That's why I've been on the background. So wonderful, I really appreciate all of you for standing firm. You know. Um, our leader Mazinamdekan made it very clear, even apart from what he made clear to us. If you have, if you are, if you are into spirit, you will understand what is happening. Without wasting much time, I just wanna appreciate all of you and tell you people that Australia are strongly behind you people. It's just that, uh, the old man we have here, he brought so much confusion here. So but right now, we, 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 we remove him from our platform. So we are fixing our, our house in order. We, we, we remove him from our platform, so we are fixing our, our house in order. Very soon, Australia will, will, will bounce back. Without wasting much time, I'm supporting my state, which is Odmegu State, with hundred thousand AJ. And also, I want to encourage our Odmegu State. You guys should not listen to Ngozi Orabeze, he was sent to come and hide, to come and destroy what we are doing through Anduba. So, uh, you guys must remain resolute, don't listen to Ngozi Orabeze and his bro, and her brother. Don't bring disgrace to Odmegu State, you guys must reject whatever Ngozi Orabeze is bringing. Ngozi Orabeze is doing exactly what Musa said, Musa said to attack their finance. If you look at what is happening now, our finance is being attacked, by who? By the same Ngozi Orabeze, so, or, or, or the Melgo State, I'm pleading with you people. Just ignore Ngozi Orabeze and remain focused, and remain focused. So, so that when Biafra come, we will not, the, the disgrace will not be on Odmegu State. The state who, who was behind, or state who supported Ngozi Orabeze from her evil doing. I thank you Biafrans for what you guys are doing, remain strong, remain resolute. I have a lot to say, but because we just resumed work today, I don't really have much time, but I really appreciate all of you. Our APM, remain strong, okay, Nkere, don't look at what is happening, shame will be unto those people who is lying against you. As you can see, there by there, the truth is coming out, same way you will be vindicated. You will still rejoice one day, um, you will be making story of all the black men and all the lies against you. Remain strong, and also my Information Minister, I want to use this opportunity to tell you, don't be intimidated. In fact, let me tell you what is happening now, what is happening now is you are the Ephion, Philip Ephion. Don't be scared, don't be shy to tell your brothers, which is, I'm part of them, Ibo, the Ibo speaking. Don't be scared to tell them the truth, tell them their truth in their face, call them what they are. Tell them the truth, don't let anyone intimidate you or, 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 or make you to not to speak the truth, speak the truth. That is why you are here in this, in this era, you are here in this era to tell those your brothers, those your Ibo speaking brother. Tell them their, 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 their foolishness, write them in their face. Because it is only truth that will give us Biafra, we have to speak the truth all the time, regardless for any fear or favor. So I'm using this opportunity to encourage you, Sonia Barawa, my Information Minister. This time around, you are here on a mission, your mission is to tell those your brothers, Ibo speaking people. Tell them their foolishness in their face, tell them the truth in their face, tell them all the evil, all their greediness, tell them the truth. That's why you are here at this time around, thank you, my fellow Biafrans, I will try to redeem the pledge this week, thank you, I appreciate you all.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you everyone, I think we have done it in a wonderful way today. Wish to say a very big thank you to Biafrans and the homeland, and on behalf of the PM, um. Our Honorable Minister Bishop Comfort, the ball is in your court for you to give a vote of thanks to Biafrans and the homelanders, we try to cut him, thank you so much.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity, um, our acting Prime Minister, I'm honored to follow you on this journey. Today, the forty states of Biafra, the factory and the bridges. Our Communication Minister Sonia Barawa, appreciate you a lot with your deputies. Nobody can beat you, we are proud to have you, despite, despite illusions and the things said against you. You stood tall, as um, our HE, Samanepa, will stand tall, and he was not moved. So let every one of us join hands together to support in funding this noble cause to our freedom. No matter how much it is, a lot of people have set standards, five Ajemas, fifty Ajema group, try and join one, please. My prayer goes to angels back home and our gallant men. I'm supporting, um, this particular group, we are come from Aba State, with fifty dollars tonight, and it will be put on, online tonight. And I just want to say a little prayer for everyone for encouragement. Father, in the name of Chukokika Biamma, Lord, I pray for this particular Biafra. We have re-declared our freedom, Father, now our freedom is in our hands. Father, grant us the fortitude, the wisdom, knowledge, unity, Lord, to be able to pull together. Father, to move on, to support our gallant men that are out there in the rain and sun. Oh Lord, in your mercy, because it's only you that will do this for us. The recognition of Biafrans in your hands, Lord, in your mercy, direct us. Our acting Prime Minister granting the fortitude, the knowledge, wisdom and understanding, Father, to meet the people that matter. To go into the government that matters, Lord, and bring us good news, and we pray from Nandikanu, he will soon be released. Our HE, our, um, his Royal Highness Samanepa, Lord, he has done nothing, self determination is not a crime. So in the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, with the power given to your children, I prophesy that the doors will be opened for him. As the doors were opened for Peter in the prison, Father, let the doors open for him in Jesus' name. And I pray for protection over our government, the Brigi, CRISI, I pray for protection. Father, no weapon fashioned against us shall prosper, but in the camp of the enemies, Father, I put division. I put misunderstanding, I put war amongst them, in the name of Chukokika Biamma, I pray tonight, he say, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Comfort, Bishop Doctor Comfort. No, 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 why, why should we do that?
I've been calling you, your number is not going, you know, Adazayon.